The first item on this evening's agenda is the city manager asking me.
You need to amend the agenda.
Ah.
Right, you should do that first.
We will be amending the agenda for this evening. Mr. City Attorney.
Yeah, there's an item that staff would like to have added to the agenda, which is allowable under the Brown Act. You just need to make finding that the information came to the city's attention after the agenda was posted and that there's a need for immediate action. And my understanding is that since there will not be a meeting in August, that there's that the need for the approval of this item is required for the city to respond prior to September. I think Dan can get I forget the details of exactly what it is, but I'll let the city manager fill you in.
The league, we would like to join the league taking up position on the Small Cell Act that's traveling through the legislature and there's a hearing next week. And so, we've asked to add this. So it's within your the Brown Act for you to make the findings to amend the agenda and add it. This came to us on Monday.
All right, do you need an action?
Yes, you should vote to add this to the agenda.
Please have a motion to amend the agenda, consider opposition to Senate Bill 3157.
I'll make that motion. A second.
All those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So that'll go on the consent. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public that would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda? We'll give you three minutes. Yes, sir. If you could come to the microphone and tell us who you are.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Monty Dignan and reside up on Elm Avenue. And the reason that I'm commenting this evening is the paving project that has been going on throughout the city. Yes, we all voted for it. It's a long overdue and necessary step. Unfortunately, the contractor in the city needs to do a better job of communicating to the residents and managing access during the work. The recent road closure on Upper Elm was not announced. There were no notices to neighbors. There was a small sign down below that said, "Road closed at 85 Elm, PG&E work." Calling PG&E said, "It's not our job. You can get no more information out of them." And what's been happening is the road closures have been starting earlier, lasting later, and it is near impossible to get through. It's playing havoc with schedules, appointments, and other things. And most of the time that the road was closed, one-way traffic would have been feasible. That's what they had done when they paved the upper part of Elm. We've had to live through part of this already. Now we're getting another round of it. So you can understand, I'm here on behalf of myself and a number of neighbors voicing these complaints. What we would like to ask is that the city do a better job of letting the people know if there's going to be a road closure, will it be all day? Will it be a delay of 10 minutes? Something very reasonable. So that hopefully that will keep it to a minimum, not impose anymore. There have also been logistics where part of the paving that they did was down on Pepper and Lower Elm, effectively closing off the top part after the hours they said it was going to be. I understand things can go a little bit long, a little bit wrong, but it really makes us wonder who's managing, who's overseeing this. We know that the city can and should do better. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Would the city manager like to respond?
Yeah, on behalf of the city staff, I would like to apologize for the lack of notice to Mr. Dignan's part of Elm. Unfortunately, some miscommunication between our contractor and the staff resulted in notices only being provided to folks around the roadwork and not to the part of Elm that was temporarily cut off because of the roadwork. That mistake won't happen again. We put a protocol in place. Elm is unfortunately in the whole Palm Hill neighborhood suffering from the problem that we're actually not the only entity up there. And there's a lot of misunderstanding. Some of the work that's been observed is over the last year plus, it's been the water district, some of it's been PG&E, and some of it's been the city. And the sign in particular was an unauthorized sign that created all sorts of havoc and confusion in the neighborhood. It's incorrect that to state that we didn't have to close the road, whereas in other occasions, the road was left to open one lane. When we're doing a full pavement of the road, which is what our program is, there are times it's necessary for us to close a road entirely. Because if people drive through while the surface is cooling, they'll damage their car and the surface of the road. We failed in that respect to make sure that every single person is going to be inconvenienced to gotten a notice, and we'll do better in that regard. I sympathize with the folks on Palm Hill in general. I'd say of all our neighborhoods, they probably had the greatest construction fatigue experience the last year and a half. I'd throw in a number of pretty substantial remodels that landed on that neighborhood in the last year and a half, two years. So we are trying. We will improve our process. We're committed in doing that. And we apologize for the noticing failure.
Thank you. And the city council understands as well, try to do a better job. The next item on the agenda this evening, any other public comment this evening? The next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation. It's a issuance of lease revenue bonds 2018 by the Larkspur Public Finance Authority by Mark Pressman of Wolf Hansen and Company. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to give you a brief overview of what happened with the bond sale that we've been working on for the last three, four months. So I've prepared a package for you. I'll go through the front page, and then behind that are other documents that are were involved in the transaction. We went to sale with $26.5 million worth of bonds to the competitive bidding. It was structured as a lease-leaseback transaction where there was no election required. You had an election with a sales tax, and that was combined with the idea that you would always do bond financing that would be supported by the sales tax, which the sales tax comes into the general fund and the lease-leaseback is paid by the general fund. So the general fund is sort of a conduit of those monies. The objectives of the financing were to give $26 million net proceeds for infrastructure improvements throughout the city. You wanted $1.6 million annual debt service or payments that would be supported by the sales tax. The staff decided that that was a relatively conservative number relative to the expected sales tax that was come in. We wanted the shortest repayment period possible, the highest rating possible for the city of Larkspur. You wanted the funds available quickly to take advantage of today's historically low interest rates, and also to give proceeds to the city so you could start work as early as Julian is prepared to do so. And the bonds were to be sold at a competitive sale to assure the lowest possible interest cost. The results were, congratulations, the city of Larkspur received the coveted Standard &amp; Poor's rating of AAA, which is the highest possible. It's on par with Mel Valley, note, and County of Marin and a number of other local agencies. The Standard &amp; Poor's does not hand out AAA ratings willy-nilly. It's very, it's a, it's a, you're in the stratosphere as far as being in that group. So congratulations. But all of the other components of the city's rating were considered very strong and very strong by Standard &amp; Poor's. The one exception was your contingent liability profile, which involves pension and OPEB obligations. They considered that to be very weak. So that's something that could potentially be worked on. I know staff has mentioned that to me a couple of times, and I can try to work with staff a little bit to come up with some thoughts on how that might be mitigated and improved a little bit. The 2018 bonds received a double A-plus rating. That's standard that they give one notch below the city's general obligation, full faith and credit on a lease transaction. There were five bids received at a competitive sale. UBS Financial was the winning bid. The cover bid was Morgan Stanley, and their bid was a .002419 percent higher interest rate. So it was really sharp pencils involved in this. They bid with a $1.3 million premium, which allowed us to reduce the size of the bond issue from $26.5 million down to $25.1 million. So you have less bonds outstanding as a result of this transaction. You have less debt. We still produced the $26 million net proceeds for Julian to buy a condominium or something like that. You had $475,000 of costs of issuance, and the average annual debt service was 1.605. So we're about $5,400 higher than what your objective was. But on a transaction this size, I believe that's pretty darned close. We have a 24-year amortization period, and the final true interest cost was 3.304036. So just about 3.3 percent. The next pay or next packet is the actual rating report by Standard &amp; Poor's. And there it gives you the detail, and it talks about the different components, you know, very strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and then very weak debt and contingent liability profile. And then they talk about strong institutional framework and their outlook. They say they won't be raising your rate in the next two years, but they couldn't anyway because you're already the top. So but they they've given a summary. So that's there for you to look at. The next page is the front copy, the front page of the official statement, which is the disclosure document that goes out to investors. I've given the clerk four copies, hard copies of the entire document. So they're on file. I just didn't have enough to give to each of the council members. You probably wouldn't want to lug that around anyway. So but it is on file with the city staff. So if you want to look at it, it's there. The next page is shows interest rates in the municipal market over the last, well, that's since May, beginning of May of 2018, showing where interest rates went up and down and up and down, and where the Larkspur issue was actually sold. You'll see that the rates went up, well, they went up and down, up and down, and we caught part of the downswing. So we did get interest rates that were better than what they could have been if we'd sold a week or two earlier. The next page shows all the bidders that signed up to bid on the bonds, a total of about 10 or 11 different issue or different underwriters. But in fact, at the end of the day, there were five that did in fact bid, and that's not unusual. They get either too busy or the day before, two days before they, one or another of them will buy another issue. So they have too much inventory. They don't want to take another one on. So they drop out of the bidding process. So but here this page shows that UBS was the winner, and Morgan Stanley was, as I said, an .002419 higher TIC, which is true interest cost. And the next set of documents is the detailed analysis of, it's probably more than you want to know, but it's there for you if you wish. It shows all the statistics, the interest rates per maturity, and everything else. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to respond.
Any questions from council members? Any members of the public would have questions or comments on this item? Thank you.
Again, I would say congratulations, number one, on a successful bond issue, and number two, on getting your AAA. Very good. Staff did a great job on the presentation, by the way.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to staff, too. The next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of the consent calendar. Are there items from the consent calendar that council members would like to pull for additional discussion?
I'd just like to make sure that in the city manager's report, he covers the 4.4. Just a little update for people about where we are with the fire situ, the fire merger situation.
So you would like 4.4?
Yeah, just so that we can have a little, is that all right? Can you, are you, were you planning in the city manager's report to talk about the fire consolidation?
I was not, but if you would like me to, I can.
I'd just like a little update on that.
So you'd like to do that under the city manager's report?
Yeah, maybe just under the city manager's report.
All right.
So I don't need to pull anything.
We have an amended consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Make that motion. I'll second it.
We're sharing a mic tonight, so it's.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's oral report.
I'll start with what's going on with the Central Marin Fire Department or Fire Authority. You get to pick which word you like better. The guys like department. So I think the, first off, the Fire Council, I get used to saying that, had its first meeting. The JPAS does exist and has now existed for the better part of a year. And structurally is present, legally registered as a government entity. At the current moment in time, there are no employees in the authority. All of the fire personnel still are employees of the city of Larkspur or the town of Corder Madera. And the reason for that are some issues that we're having with the with CALPER, the Public Employee Retirement System. Without going into great detail, the world of joint powers authorities, government entities that are created by two agencies or more to share powers, has created some heartburn for CALPER's, primarily around what happens if the JPAS go away. And it's ground to a halt the issuing of new CALPER's contracts to JPAS. There are two parallel processes going on to resolve this issue at CALPER's. One is legislation. That legislation will be very helpful for existing JPAS that already have employees and are members of CALPER's. It's not as helpful for the situation wherein it's still unclear what the rules will be around newly-formed JPAS that are seeking a contract. So a secondary process that's taking place is at the executive level of CALPER's, which is a discussion about the legal concerns at CALPER's, the fiscal concerns that CALPER's has. There's also some questions about federal regulations that relate to some of these employment issues that are trying to be resolved. And once they're all done, we remain cautiously optimistic. We'll be issued a CALPER's contract, at which time we can truly be a fully operational independent agency by moving the employees under the umbrella of CMFA or CMFD, depending on your choice. The, we are not the only entity caught in this situation. So we have partners working with us to present these issues to CALPER's. And while we like to think of ourselves as a pretty heavy hitter, and we were out there first, and you've heard me say before that Mr. Kuzumano and I have testified at CALPER's about this issue, we are fortunate, I think, now that a similar agency is coming into being on the peninsula with some bigger entities. And that's brought a little extra cloud, I think, to the discussion, because they're bigger agencies with more population and maybe a little more resources. So together, I think we're doing our best, and I'm hoping we'll resolve this soon. I know the chief is probably still in the back of the room, and he's really anxious.
He looked up front.
He's really anxious for this to end and to get everybody clearly under one roof. Now, for the benefit of the public, I want to be clear, this is a lot of administrative and legal minutia. Functionally, we're operating together. Functionally, if you have a need for our services, you're going to get a response. It's going to come from the nearest fire station in Corder Madera or Larkspur. It's going to be staffed by whichever personnel we're assigned to that station on that day. And you're not going to notice a thing. This is not about the service. We've got all that in place, and we've been operating as one entity for quite a while, and it's been going very well in that regard. This is just a unfortunate circumstance of current law and kind of landing at just the wrong time in terms of these questions being raised.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay. I have a few other things I just wanted to tell the council and the public. First off, let's just continue the theme of construction fatigue, because although I extend great sympathy to Palm Hill, which I do think has borne a big blow, a big brunt in the last year and a half, two years. They're not the only ones. And I know those of us who spend a lot of our time here on the southern part of Magnolia, every day it's an adventure to find out what's going on in Southern Magnolia, South Magnolia. Again, we have the same sort of problem. We have the city doing our project, and we have PG&E doing its projects. The challenge for us at the city, and I'm only offering this for perspective, is that we have a pretty clear timeline for our work. PG&E has a very fungible timeline for its work. And so each day, we sort of have to figure out where PG&E is going to be and try to make sure we minimize as best we can the impact of what they're doing. To that end, we now are actually assigning someone every day to engage with PG&E to make sure we're all on the same page about what work they're doing. I do want to assure the public it's not frivolous. This is critical work to ensure the safety of the pipelines under the ground, and it has to get done. So we're trying our best to work with PG&E. They do have mandates that they're trying to meet. And it's a big coordination challenge, and we'll keep marshaling through and apologize for some of the impacts. And we ask folks to please be patient. I do hold my breath occasionally as I see frustrated drivers do some rather creative things to try to get around the delays. I really encourage folks to allow a little more time and be a little more patient getting through some of these construction zones. Which leads me to the other newly emerging construction zone for those folks who spend a little more of their time in Northern Magnolia. We have the, the Bon Air Bridge work has now started, and it's impacting the intersection of Magnolia and Bon Air. And I'm sure that's confusing and frustrating to folks because they aren't yet seeing any equipment actually out on that bridge. It's all sort of in that area of the intersection. We know there's been backups. We're working on reconfiguring the timing of the lights so that we can get that traffic flow better through. We've seen some improvement. I know there's still some more improvement we can make. We're also working on trying to create better opportunities in terms of lanes and flow. It's difficult as we try to develop our staging area that will allow us to keep the bridge open, which of course is one of our big commitments to the community. So again, we ask for a little patience and ask folks to allow a little more lead time through that area. And please refrain from trying to do anything too creative to shorten your trip through that area because, again, holding my breath on some of the things I'm hearing folks are doing to try to gain a couple seconds through that zone. As a general rule, I'd say for the next so many months, if not year, years, as you're going through Bon Air and Magnolia, you really want to allow yourself a little extra time. On a lighter note, I have some celebration to celebratory comments about our community service departments. First, in the library. We are really pleased to note that our summer programs have been doing very well, and are actually participation's up 36% since last year. And we thought we were doing gangbusters improving last year. So really excited, really reflects what Janice Ackle and her staff have done to boost program participation in the library. It's vibrant and busy if you come and spend a day with the library staff. It's really exciting. And then, once again, Super Cool Summer School can can report that attendance was up, programming was expanded, and we still survived. And to the best of my knowledge, we had one nick, one little cut on one finger that necessitated a Band-Aid. And I think eventually, just double check with a doctor. Otherwise, we survived unscathed. Pretty good. Because we've run a lot of kids through that program. So very excited, very appreciative of our staff and all the work they did. So but it's done now for those folks who found it a little frustrating on Darty at eight o'clock in the morning for the last few weeks. So turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of the city manager on his report this evening? Council member Harrah?
I just wanted to say thank you, reflecting on your comments about the the bridge construction work. It's complicated and a little confusing, but I think the city's done a good job in marking out the way in which the lanes have been reconfigured there. I go through that intersection at least once a day. My daughter, who's learning how to drive, goes through that intersection at least once a day, and she hasn't hit anything yet. So I think you're doing a good job, and I appreciate that.
Other questions of the city manager on his report? The next item on this evening's agenda is the council members' oral reports and comments. Any reports this evening? Vice Mayor Morrison?
Good evening. I'm working with the North Magnolia businesses, and they would like some, some, we'd like to beautify that area and pay some attention to it. So I'm working with four individuals who own businesses, and we'd like to, in November, have have Winter Fest in North Magnolia. So we're going to go ahead. We have wreaths from our centennial. Jerry from Balloon Delight is holding those for us. We're going to put them up in November. Each business is going to have their Christmas lights. So it's going to be festive in that area, which we're looking forward to. I also have a signed petition from over 50 businesses and individuals wanting a sign to, say, North Magnolia Business District. So that's, I'd like to bring to, in to a part of the agenda at one of these council meetings. Chamber of Commerce, we now have 62 members, two new board members, which is exciting. I want to remind everybody about the wine stroll that this Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00. Hope all of you can make it. It's going to be a lot of fun. Also, we're having a county, Marin County Chamber mixer, and that's going to happen on July the 25th. We're all invited to that, and those that are chamber members are invited, at Peacock Gap Golf Course. And with all that, and we're also doing extra advertising digitally as with Story Studio, Facebook, and Instagram for more updates on the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other council member reports this evening? Council member Harrah?
I just wanted to mention, since it's been a while since we had a city council meeting, on June 22, I attended and provided testimony at a on-bank hearing with the California Public Utilities Commission on California Customer Choice, an attempt by the commission to evaluate the regulatory framework and options for an evolving electric market, with respect to which community choice aggregation and the entity which with we support, which is MCE Clean Energy, were a particular focus. The the hearing was contentious. There is a lot of, a lot of questions about the role that CCAs are going to play in California's retail electricity market going forward into the future. Those of us who support community choice certainly have a perspective on that. But there are numerous constituents of the CPUC that have different perspectives. So that's going to be an ongoing process, but I was very pleased to be able to provide testimony in support of community choice. Oh, and I also wanted to mention the parade, because I played a distinctive role in this year's parade as a judge. year's parade as a judge. I know others on council have played some, some role, can't remember what. But it was, it was terrific. It was the first time that I was a judge and I hope I'll have the opportunity to do that again in years to come because you don't have to do anything but sit. And the, all the participants in the parade itself then stop in front of the reviewing stand and do something. And some of the things that they do are quite entertaining and some of them are less so. But it was, it was a treat for me to be there. I, of course, gave our mayor the highest marks for his participation in the parade, which I am sure will hold me in good stead in the future.
Thank you. We did have fun that day. Thanks to councilmembers Way and Chu for, and the friends of the library for making it a good day for, for all of us. Thank you. Other council member reports? I will just note, I'll be going to the meeting of the Bay Conservation Development Commission tomorrow as one of the two commissioners representing the four north Bay counties to receive the newest science on sea level rise. So I'll be looking forward to reporting back to you on the latest. Also, at our smart, trained board meeting today, the latest ridership care numbers, and I say this because the platform is under construction at Larkspur Landing and we're soon to be integrated with, with the system. So far, 660,000 passengers, 55,500 bicycles, 2,500 wheelchairs. And everything's over projections. So we'll be dealing with impacts of the popularity of the system. So I think it's time to take note and start getting active and planning for what's to come. With that, we'll move to the public hearings. We'll open the public hearings. The first item this evening is 7.1 on preferential parking permit zones. A, we're going to introduce a first reading of ordinance 1028 slash 18 to allow the city council to extend preferential parking privileges by resolution. And then there'll be a part B, which is a discussion of creation of a preferential parking permit zone in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to provide one staff report covering both of the items that are before you in this hearing, but as the mayor noted, they are two separate actions for consideration. And while the second one needs the first one to be taken up, you could act on the first item and choose not to act on the second item. So that, those are your choices this evening. So this issue of creating preferential parking zones began, I think, almost two years ago when the city, primarily me, engaged with representatives of the Property Owners Association for Larkspur Marina about concerns about high school drivers and safety and health concerns that the drivers might be causing as they're parking in the neighborhood and rushing off to school. And we've talked about that at your June 20 meeting at length. Some of these behaviors have raised concerns in the past. And in fact, we went through the history with you that the city first tried to address these concerns in the mid-'70s by adopting by ordinance some restricted parking areas in the Marina neighborhood that had two-hour limitations. Then in the late-'90s, this issue came up again. Same thing, concerns about kids parking in the neighborhood and rushing off to the high school and some of the fallout that that was creating. And at that time, there was administrative decision to implement 20-minute parking areas in this, in the neighborhood. So from this discussion, we came up with a general line of thought on what might be an approach to, to solve that problem or to at least try to address it. And that's captured in a letter you received from the Marina Property Owners Association, the points that we had discussed collectively. And it was essentially that we would create what the Property Owners Association calls zero-minute parking, or I would say only by permit parking during school hours all throughout the neighborhood and that there would be permits for the residents to exempt them from those restrictions. The homeowners association, Property Owners Association, as has been indicated in the letter and in conversation and further correspondence with you, had offered to provide administrative support to reduce the impact on the city and on central and police authority for these As I went to work on the staff report for this item and was doing some of the background research, some additional concerns and issues came to light that I brought to you on the, in the June 20 discussion item on this topic. Notably, that we have a program in existence in a neighborhood that's inconsistent with our municipal code. So this goes back to the fact that the first program was put in place by ordinance and codified in the municipal code. And then the second program was put in place administratively and doesn't match the ordinance. And there was no, for whatever reason, the two weren't reconciled back when these things occurred. And so we highlighted for you that that's one of the issues we should at least, however we come out of this process, we should reconcile these differences. Secondly, somehow throughout the course of these conversations with the Property Owners Association, I had not personally understood that the police authority was issuing permits to residents. And so I didn't fully understand that or the nature or how it was being administered until, till June of this year. So I think that handicaps some of the conversation and I take responsibility for having not quite understood that aspect of things. The chief's been kind enough to fill me in on his understanding of the history of how this program evolved. And I've had the chance to speak to some of the retired personnel to get a better perspective and so I can offer that, if that's of interest to the council. We've touched on some of that at your past discussion meeting. Not surprisingly though, as we started to talk about this general issue, the conversation broadened and it broadened in the respect that other neighborhoods that experience some impact now from the high school or are concerned they might experience impacts from the high school said, "What about us?" And they were at your meeting asking, "What about us?" And you've gotten some correspondence with that general theme. And so we started to give some thought to what does that mean for the city and CMPA in terms of any sort of program. After talking with you in a general discussion item on June 20 gave us the direction to prepare for today to have a public hearing on these topics. And so you have two items in front of you. The hearing is primarily for the purpose of considering the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance that we've presented to you is modeled after an ordinance that the city of Nevada has. And it's a pretty simple ordinance that empowers the council to create preferential parking zones by resolution. So rather than codifying specific restrictions that the city might want to change later on, it creates the nimbleness of being able to do it rather quickly through a resolution process. I think that's a cleaner approach and probably would create a better and easier to follow historical record as we go forward with any sort of program. So I've just, I've been generally supportive of the language that's in the Nevada code and have presented it to you. The council needs to make a decision this evening if that ordinance is satisfactory to and if you want to put it into place. And that's one of the actions that you currently have in front of you. And then there's the second matter, which is what should we do about the question from, of the Marina neighborhood and the concerns about its, the impacts that it's experiencing. And as we talk about that issue as part of this hearing this evening, there are some key things that I'd like you to focus on and that I think need to be addressed. One is to reconcile this issue of the code and the signage. Somehow we should come out of this process with some reconciliation of that. We also have to decide what's an appropriate permit fee and, and then codify that. Fees are supposed to be adopted by the council and so no matter what this fee is, you need to give us some direction and then we need to adopt a fee. The fee that's in place now was, as I understand it, put in place administratively by the then-police chief. And again, a lot of this occurred under the concern of, of health and safety and the staff was acting within their executive authorities to deal with the health and safety concern. And just, just for whatever reason, I wasn't here, we were talking quite a while back, the cleanup never occurred to reconcile all of these things. But you should come out of this deciding what the fee is for this program. The current fee for the permits that are currently issued in the neighborhood is $5 for the lifetime of the vehicle that it's issued to. You know, what we've done here is propose a fee that's a little different and we haven't had a dialogue with the neighborhood about it. So I've proposed it and I presented you with the resolution, that was your direction. But I've suggested to you, may not want to take action tonight on a fee so that there's a chance to engage the neighborhood and any other neighborhood that may be interested in this sort of program. The fee we're proposing is a subsidized rate. The fee that's in place is a subsidized rate. And so part of this discussion is really what's an appropriate level of subsidy. And that has a lot to do with the subjective values that we place on needing to administer a program, limiting access to a public good versus concerns about health and safety and ensuring orderliness and the reduction of nuisance behavior. So those are really your call in a lot of respect. Those are policy decisions as much as they're administrative decisions. There actually is, there actually was an attempt by Sandra Fel to explore this similar concern several years ago. And one of the things that got bogged down in is was trying to come up with a fee and then have some system for reevaluating that fee. As I've explored this more, the cities that have these programs seem to have sort of a set-it-and-forget-it mentality about the fee. They sort of come up with what they think's an appropriate fee and then that seems to live for quite a long time before it ever gets revisited. There are examples of these types of programs all throughout our county and in other counties. I thought I'd just highlight three for background for the council. We've talked about Nevada. You can see it in the staff report where we showed you examples of the types of hearings they've done for some of their neighborhoods. Their fee is $30 per permit, per year. If you purchase a permit, you get one guest permit. So you essentially get two permits for 30 bucks and you can get up to two permits, but that really means you can get up to four permits. That's their program. Another example is Mill Valley. Mill Valley has a residential permit program. It's $20 for the year. After six months through the year, they reduce it to $10 for the remainder of the year. They also have an annual program and they issue the permits annually. On the other end of the spectrum is the county. The county has two preferential parking zones, one's in Kentfield and one's in San Quentin Village. They don't charge a fee, but you can only get a permit for a vehicle that's registered and, and you have to provide proof that you are a resident where you have it registered. So they have no guest permit program. I'd also submit that given the limited number of deputies that do patrol, vehicle traffic control of any kind out in the county, that they might have a harder time justifying any sort of fee because I think responsiveness is probably pretty low out in the county to any sort of permit program. Not a knock on the county, that's a manpower challenge. My understanding is the same deputy who might respond to Kentfield could very easily be out on the coast at the time that there's an issue to resolve. So I can understand why the county felt it probably shouldn't even discuss having a fee for its program. That all underscores that a big part of the permit program is to create signage and signaling of what is and isn't ideal or permitted behavior. And in fact, we've talked about that the signage and the permits would as much be to serve as a deterrent and discourage the behaviors we want to mitigate as it would be for us to create any sort of punitive system. And although we might do some level of early enforcement at the beginning of the school year to remind everybody that the program exists, for, for the most part, this would be a call-for-service type of program where we would come out and respond to it when we receive a call from a resident that there's a violation of concern that needs to be dealt with. So one of the discussions you can have this evening and certainly ask us if you need more direction or information would be what fee, if any, should be charged for parking permits? We've proposed they be annually issued. I think that has some benefit because it allows us to be aware of the registration process, monitoring the renewal process and generally being certain of how many permits are floating out there in any given year. We've also, after talking with the police chief and talking with the city attorney, felt it's probably much better if the city, through CMPA, managed the issuance of permits. The chief's prepared to, to commit the resources to do that. As part of that, I think any fee we do charge should be retained by the police authority. I won't go into the details today. Those of you who've sat on the police council know how fees get sort of credited into the wash, but that would essentially be who the fee would be paid to is because they'd be bearing the larger extent of the, of the administrative costs. We've proposed that households be able to obtain up to four permits to allow for their own needs plus any guests that they might have. And then you had asked us, specific to this neighborhood, so it's in the resolution, that we would have some system in place so that the high school could get parking permits for guests on days when it might need guests to be able to park in public streets near the high school. That was something we had heard about in the past, that when we put in the restricted parking, it had caused some challenges for visitors who couldn't find parking on the campus when it's fully impacted.
Could you clarify the four permits per household? That two are for visitors and not just for four vehicles per household?
Sorry, that's right. We had suggested they be two for vehicles and two for guests. Yeah, my understanding is most programs that define a guest permit, it's essentially a placard that's hanging versus a sticker or some other more permanent mark, item that you place on the car. I don't know that I, I want to say that we're going to knock on doors and find out exactly why someone has a guest placard. We're going to hope that people are honest about that. So these are all items for your discussion this evening that we'd like direction. The Property Owners Association, you've received communication from one of the folks that we've been dealing with, Patricia Steele, reiterating their request, which is along the lines of the letter that you have in your packet. And so you have that as a basis for your discussion as well. I know there was some concern by some of the council members about hearing from or at least knowing that the school district was represented during these conversations. I want to thank one of the, I guess two interim superintendents. Valerie Pitts is here this evening. I think she's prepared to offer you some information, if you'd like, about how they manage parking at Redwood and whatever other information that she might be able to provide. And I want to thank her for being present this evening. And I'm pretty certain there's some representatives of this neighborhood, if not some of the others, who might want to speak to you this evening. Staff's available and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, would you advise on process relative to taking council questions, public comment for part A, then part B, or to do a combined public comment period? Or what would you advise?
I think in this case, I would probably do them both together, only because I think you're going to have a challenge separating them apart.
And then we'll separate the actions at the end.
And then at the end, I would take up the actions separately. But again, the ordinance, the question is just whether you want to empower yourself to do this by resolution rather than ordinance each time a neighborhood asks for preferential parking. We've suggested you do it by resolution. That's really all that question is in terms of the ordinance. All these broader policy implications are sort of what precedent do you want to set with the Marina neighborhood? That will have implications as we go forward and deal with any other requests.
Are there questions of the city manager or staff regarding this item from council members? I will start on the right, Councilmember Harrah and Councilmember Way.
Yeah, sure. So just for clarification, with respect to the ordinance, the action we're being asked to take tonight is what? Just to waive the first reading?
Waive first reading. So they come.
7.1A.
7.1A is to waive the first reading of the ordinance that's been proposed and then it'll come back for a second reading at your next meeting.
And as far as resolution is concerned for the Marina neighborhood? And as far as resolution is concerned for the Marina neighborhood, there's nothing we necessarily have to do tonight. We could actually allow this to sit for a little while so we could get some additional feedback from the neighborhood.
Yeah, if you adopted a resolution tonight, it actually legally wouldn't be in effect until the ordinance is in effect, but would serve as direction to the staff and the community of what your intentions are. But you could also accomplish the same thing by giving us oral direction this evening, and then we bring the resolution back with the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, that might be a helpful way of tackling it.
Either approach would be fine from a logistics standpoint. They'd sort of both get you to the same finish line.
And I guess I have a question that I asked before. How would we be dealing with commercial visitors, landscapers, other types of commercial activity? Would they be, would it be incumbent upon them to go to the homeowner and get a permit to hang from their commercial vehicle, or is there some special treatment? I didn't really see that that issue was separately treated in these documents.
We haven't proposed to separately treat it. That's something the council could certainly discuss. Presumably, if households obtained a guest permit, whether you want that to be a fee or an add-on, they could give that to a contractor or landscaper, whoever's present providing service to their home. Alternatively, we certainly could talk. I think we'd want to have a future meeting about issuing exemptions to businesses and what that would look like or why we would do it. I would reiterate for the council, though, most of the year, this is a call-for-service situation. So we're going to have to sort of hope that folks aren't going to call and ask us to come out and take it, their neighbor's landscaper, but I suppose that might happen.
Might.
It might. You know, the, for example, in Mill Valley, they only issue the permits to their residents and to their vehicles, but the restriction there is four hours, and that's in part to ensure that the types of activity you're discussing can be present and not be in violation of any time limit.
Right. That was actually part of my question. Do we have some understanding about the experiences of other jurisdictions and how they dealt with this issue?
Yes, so that Mill Valley, this kind of has mostly been to ensure that residents who want to leave a car on the street all day can do that. And that's the purpose it serves, and they rarely have to deal with these issues. They do from time to time, as I understand it, have to sort of come through in police vehicles that have been there too long that shouldn't be. The Nevada experience, I understand, the first neighborhood to come forward, it was the exact same experience the Marina neighborhood's having. It was, it's the area right around Nevada High, was experiencing the exact same problems. There was the issuing of the permits, and there was a heavy enforcement in the first couple of years, and then slowly calls for service have tapered off as sort of word spread among the high school population that there would be consequences for parking in those neighborhoods. So, and in their case, the restrictions, I'd have to double check, but I believe they're under an hour, but they're not as short as 20 minutes. I have 40 in my head, but I apologize, I have my notes on that in front of me.
And I guess one last question. You mentioned that the fee that's being proposed here, so this would be an annual $50 fee?
That's what we've proposed.
Yeah.
Sort of based on our assessment of our costs and trying to come up with something. It's still, I think, a subsidized amount. But again, since it is a subsidized amount, I'm not going to have huge heartburn if you tell me it should be some other amount. That's the challenge with the subsidy. There's some subjectivity on your part.
Right.
Placing value on these other items.
Right, and that's actually the question I was going to ask. Since this is inherently a subsidized fee, do you have a sense of what a fee that would not be subsidized might be? Would it be $70, $75, or we just don't, we just can't figure that out?
Well, actually, I was reading the record of San Rafael. They had some pretty interesting conversations at their council meeting about, and I checked outside their meeting. And the problem is, it's hard to predict because you're going to have a huge cost in the first couple of years because you're probably going to do a lot more enforcement on the newly created zone. And so your cost in the first couple of years is probably going to be much, much higher than the fee's going to capture. And the question is whether you would move it to the true cost or not. And the concern in San Rafael was you were starting to look at 70, 80, 90, $100 a permit to even come close to what the cost might actually be. And none of that discussion that they engaged in, or generally I've seen, raises the general issue of what cost you should attach to restricting a public good, although I think that's something you could put in play as well.
Okay, I just, when I heard that it was subsidized, I just want to make sure we're, we have a good handle on what the level of subsidy is.
Yeah, I, we, because we know the subsidized amount.
Right.
We often don't go into the level of detail that we do when we're trying to nail to the dollar what a cost would actually be. I could certainly work up an analysis on that between now and any future meeting, if you want.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it's critical. It's just more kind of getting a ballpark about how far we're going in one direction versus another. That's all I had.
Councilmember Way.
So in the resolution or the agenda item seven point one, if we decide on creating preferential parking neighborhoods or areas, because it could be a business area, not just residential, how do we define neighborhood? Would that be, come through the resolution ordinance process by concerned individuals?
So the way it's worked out in Nevada is that concerned individuals come forward and say, there's a problem on my street. And then the conversation, the staff broadens the conversation to what are the parameters of the area that we need to define, that there's a problem. They only have, actually only have the three zones that we gave you the examples of.
Okay.
So you can see in their resolutions, they've specifically defined the parameters of where the preferential parking area is. In Mill Valley, it's something similar. They have a list of residential streets that they've identified as having potential parking problems. And then you have to be a resident with a car registered on one of the streets to obtain a residential parking permit.
So we would have to figure out, or staff would have to figure out, based on the specifics of the complaint of that parking problem in that area?
Right. So the Marina is, is unique in some respects. We've talked about this the last meeting.
Yeah, it's contiguous.
It's fairly self-contained, and the easiest thing to do from a vehicle code standpoint would be to define the two entrances to the neighborhood.
Right.
As the starting points of the zone. It's then really easy to sign the two starting points and then be in compliance that the whole neighborhood is a preferential parking area. It'll get a little trickier in some of the other neighborhoods that have come forward where there might be more points of entry that we have to look at. We'll probably need more signage and more definition in the resolutions as to specific streets and areas.
Well, that's a worry I have, that we'll just keep pushing, it'll just keep pushing further and further out from areas that are protected to areas that aren't, but we'll...
And I think that's a concern you've heard expressed by some of the speakers at your last meeting.
My, I have two more questions. My second one is the draft ordinance 1028 lists a health and safety issue that two hours is a deterrent to unsafe behaviors by students. Will we then have that as, that unsafety or health and safety as a precedent for all the other ordinances? What if it's just people are annoyed by a restaurant patrons parking in their neighborhood? Is annoyance or health and safety, or is that going to be up to us?
The specifics of the ordinance don't, don't say anything about why you had put one of these preferential parking zones in place. You're referring, I think, to the whereas clauses, but the actual language is going to end up in the municipal code, I don't think.
Okay, all right, well, that clarifies that. Yeah, in the actual ordinance, it doesn't say the unsafe behaviors. That is in the whereas.
That's the language that's going to end up. My intent with the whereas is, was to capture why this conversation occurred.
All right, that's clear. And then lastly, on Kevin's, to sort of piggyback on Kevin about the cost, signage is going to cost us, do we...
Some amount of money.
Are we going to factor that into the cost of a...
I consider doing that.
And have it borne by the neighborhood?
I consider doing that. I probably would push that issue more if we were one agency and the police were part of the city, but since they're not, it adds a layer of administrative complication that probably exceeds the cost of us putting the signs in.
Okay. Okay, that's it for now.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
I go ahead.
Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, I want to go back to a couple of things that Councilmember Harof brought up. On the four parking permits, is that inclusive or exclusive of supposedly the two off-street parking that each resident's supposed to provide?
I will confess, I didn't tie it to what the, I think you're referring to what the zoning code requires.
Yes.
I didn't tie it to that. It was more the idea that most households, I could envision having two cars. You've said many times, and probably are right, many households in Larkspur have three cars, if not more, and the data supports that. And then the assumption, going to Councilmember Harof's question, there are going to be any number of visitors, whether they're service providers or actual guests. And so the need to be able to obtain permits for that population. So it's, it's a reflection of looking at what some of the other cities had done, and in some respects, just sort of trying to create some cap. The cap's up for discussion, just like all these other items.
Okay. Second thing was the calls for service. And I can't remember what the average calls for service were for Larkspur. I was trying to look, look it up just now. But even if we get a couple calls per day, because it's allocated across all variable costs as part of the formula, then the actual cost of that could end up being a larger subsidy than we would expect.
So...
And I guess we should also evaluate the incremental cost of enforcement, but I don't know how that gets factored into the formula at the end of the year.
So for the benefit of the public, just to make sure everybody's clear what Councilmember Chu's alluding to, the way the costs of the central and police authority are distributed involve a formula that includes a weight on the variable of calls for service. How much, how much are the residents of Larkspur using the police goes as a factor into what we pay? Although a few years ago, the council, you may recall, actually fixed that variable for the time being to create a little more stability and predictability in the formula. So what the impact would be of increasing the calls for service would probably be reflected the next time we do a revisit and recalc of calls for service. I think this is probably still a relatively minor blip. We'd probably expect some increase, but I think it still ultimately washes in the spin cycle at the police authority. So I haven't focused on that for you in this, in this discussion. I did discuss this issue a little bit with the chief, and I think he's generally, in concurrence with me, although, would express some reservation to you that if this permit program created a situation in multiple neighborhoods where there are a lot of calls for service, we probably would have to look at reopening that variable and doing a recalc to reflect an increase in use of the police for this purpose by the, by the city of Larkspur.
Yeah, I mean, 100 calls for service a day is pretty high for us. So if you got two calls, that's two, that's a 2% increase in our costs on school days. So that's actually a pretty big hit.
That's true, but don't forget, there's already a significant number of calls for service for the existing 20-minute restrictions, even though they're limited to only a proportion of the neighborhood in terms of signage. So we're already built into our distribution of costs some level for the policing of this particular situation in this particular neighborhood. I think the real possible impact that you're alluding to would come if you started broadening this to a lot of other neighborhoods, because at that point, you'd be generating new sets of calls for service that we haven't experienced before.
Okay. I think you said that was another discussion, so I'll table it for now.
That was my question. What, what impacts should we be considering if we had to consider the maximum number of neighborhoods included in this? So that would, I just want to make sure that whatever we do for one, we're able to do for all, or the maximum number. And then if the idea is to consider the fee at the beginning such that we don't have to revisit it for the maximum number of years, would that consideration not be based on a citywide approach?
I'll work that backwards, so. I want to make sure, I'm not proposing to you that you not revisit this fee. You could revisit at all you want annually when we revisit all our other fees. I'm under the impression, looking at these other agencies, both in Marin and then looking more broadly, that very few cities revisit this fee with any frequency. And that's not unheard of. We have fees that we set that are mostly intended to create some level of investment, let's say, on the part of the purchaser of a service from the city, that there is some balance of the service and a public subsidy being designed. And I keep using that word, I just want to make sure folks, we have a lot of folks in the audience probably haven't heard us talk about subsidy, and it's not a bad word. Subsidy means balancing the policy interests of the community and paying for it out of the taxpayer pot of money versus charging directly to the user of a particular service. So I think what happens is a lot of communities come up with some number to just sort of create an investment and to reflect some of the costs, and then it's one of those fees that sort of sits for many years. And I wouldn't be surprised if one day in one of these communities, they go, gosh, we haven't looked at that fee in 15 years. We ought to look at that because we've gone through that experience on a few things ourselves. So.
I would remind...
But now to your broader question.
I would just remind you, the Marina neighborhood's already questioning the fee.
I understand.
Before it's in place.
Well, I understand. Actually, the, the current experience with the Marina underscores, underscores the point I'm trying to make, right? There was a fee set in the late 90s that has never been revisited.
It's $5.
It is $5, yes. And it's $5 once, not annually, so.
More?
For, for, yeah. So, you know, that, that sort of is to my point. This is the type of fee that's partly to convey to everyone that this is sort of a partnership with the residents about dealing with a particular thing.
Which leads to my main question. Does this deserve a study session so that we can talk about things we might be, we may not be thinking about this evening?
Which one?
B.
B.
Of course, of course. I'm just saying, we want to make sure we take the time that we need to do that, if that's appropriate.
To us.
All right. We'll, we'll talk.
Just on seven point, seven point one B, yeah.
Whatever form that discussion takes. I'm not, we'll figure the right mechanism, all right? All right, other, other questions of the staff? Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item this evening? If so, please come forward and state your name for the record. Don't hurry. Good evening, Mr. Andrews.
I guess someone has to go first. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Jim Robinson from Cora Madera. I attended the school board meeting last night. I live in Madera Gardens subdivision. You're wondering why I'm here talking on this topic. Well, we're just south of the Santa Monica Trail and just south of campus of Redwood High School, and I've noticed, as I continually walk my dog every morning on Apache, which is the street that terminates at the pathway that Larkspur installed some years ago to have access to the Santa Monica Trail and over the trail into the Larkspur subdivision and ultimately Redwood High School. And I noticed that on school days, particularly this past year, we had between eight and 10 cars parked there that we don't normally see cars there that's on that street. And I would say at least half of them had stickers from Redwood High School. So being a novice, I decided to call the source, and I called the principal and talked to him. He was kind enough to explain to me the situation we're dealing with tonight that deals with the lack of available space for cars at Redwood High School. I was a bit intrigued that they did provide more stickers than they had spaces. So being the questioning person I am, I decided to take a drive over to Redwood High School around 9:30 that morning, I think it was May 11th, and drove to the high school parking lot on the west side, I'll call it, which is principally student parking, and the east side, which abuts the Eye Canal Pump Station and that area, which you're familiar with. And I noted that all of the high school student parking spaces were, were full, but I noted on the faculty side at about 9:30 on a school day, there were over almost 56 spaces, I counted, not including... counted, not including handicap space, but 56 vacant spaces that were not occupied by cars. And it made me wonder that maybe it was anonymously that day, but maybe there should be a look at the balance of spaces and balance of parking permits that are issued to students versus faculty. I know I mentioned this at the school board last meeting last night, and I was happy to see that Valerie Pitts is back in the saddle, and I can't think of any more person better to deal with this issue than her, and I hope that the school board will take a look at that. I do have concerns about issuance of permits. In one neighborhood, it was already ably mentioned by the mayor and by our city manager that sometimes this has a way of spilling over into other neighborhoods. My experience in other communities is exactly what's happens. Once you begin a permitting process, the people go and park somewhere else. And I'm not suggesting that the kids that are parking in Marina are going to come over and park in Madera Gardens, but it's very possible. I find that even within our own neighborhood, we have kids that live within a block and a half of the school, have a sticker on their car, and they will go over and park on Apache and park there rather than park at the high school parking lot. I know that's because of a not-available space or because of the inconvenience of having access there, but that is a concern, and probably less concern for Corder Madera, more concern for Larkspur. But I'm hopeful that the school district will look at the balance of permits issued between faculty and students. And I don't know how many cars are in Marina, but if there are 50 in Marina and six over in Corder Madera, maybe that'll solve your problem, at least on a temporary basis. I would mention that having gone through this experience once before, rather comically, we implemented a program in San Armon, similar situation, a high school across from a subdivision. We went through a process of permitting the cars. Our first violator and recipient of a citation was the spouse of our mayor, who was attending an event at the high school. And those were the days where we didn't have websites, we didn't have very good communication those days. So, my suggestion is that you get the word out so people are aware of this program, and I'm sure they will be, based on the audience you have here tonight. Thanks for listening, good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Meg Raft, I spoke last month as well. And while I was going to talk a whole lot, you've sort of thrown me into a loop about a couple of things. You brought up last time, this way, about parking in driveways. Our driveways aren't long enough for our cars. So, if you tell us that we have to buy a permit or we have to park in our driveway, then we're breaking another law by having cars that are too big. So, then if you say, "We can only have two permits and two guest permits, and we have three cars," where are we putting our cars that don't fit in our driveways? That's a whole new issue that just came to my head, so I wasn't really going to talk about that. But I did want to throw that out there because it's a whole new problem that you're throwing at us.
In your garage.
Pardon?
In your garage.
In your garage. Well, that would be nice, but my garage has other things in it.
Ah.
That is a choice, yeah. Anyway, as you know, our association has offered to pay for the permits, the signage, the administration, and all of that. And I understand it's difficult to figure out how to do that with one neighborhood over another, but we're still willing to pay. Whether we administer it or not, we're willing to pay. And as you know, we're currently paying $5 per permit that lasts a lifetime. I'm not really good at math, but my kid said to me, "Hey, Mom, that's a thousand percent increase in your permit fee. That's crazy," which is a lot of our other neighbors have said the same thing. And the neighbors are saying, instead of fixing this problem, you're creating a new one by taking away the freedoms that they've had for as long as they've lived there. Some people have lived there since the homes were built. And now you're saying, "You can't park on the street unless you pay $50 a year." It just feels like you're taking something away from us because we have reckless drivers driving around in our neighborhood that aren't belonging in our neighborhood. So, I don't think that as a neighborhood, we're going to be real gung-ho with a thousand percent increase, but hopefully, something can be worked out between all of us that makes everyone happy, because that one's not going to make anyone happy, I don't think. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item?
Mayor, council members, nice to see all of you. I'm here for a couple of months helping out, and I have been in conversation with David Sondheim, who's the principal of Redwood High School. And while I didn't have an opportunity to respond to Mr. Robinson last night because of the nature of public comment, I can address some of the issues related to parking at Redwood.
Excuse me. Terribly sorry. I missed, and members of the public may want you to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Valerie Pitts, and I'm interim superintendent at the Tam District. Thank you. So, first of all, I want to say that we share your concerns and the residents' concerns for the health and safety of students and the residents of the community, and we are always willing to come together to problem-solve and to work collaboratively to solve this problem. The high school has been, for the past couple of years, tightening up their parking procedures and regulations, and those guidelines can be found on the website if you're interested in what they are. As you know, we've had growing enrollment, or we will be at about 1950 at the high school next year, which is not the largest the high school has ever been by any means, but there are more cars being driven and things have changed in the community. We are obligated to provide, we are obligated by contract to provide spaces for faculty. We also provide spaces for service workers, outside contractors that are regularly on campus, serving students. We provide a certain number of spaces for visitors, and when all of that is done, we have only 300 remaining spaces for parking for students. This is not including Tam, Iscal, San Andreas, or the adult ed program. Those are not available for student parking. So, this year, we have approximately 470 seniors, 450 juniors, 520 sophomores, and 450-plus freshmen who don't drive, so I won't, we won't include them. But we are really trying to pay attention to the issues that the Marina's had, and some of the things that have been done by the administration is they have tried to increase the number of parking spaces at Redwood High School. They guarantee parking spaces to students who carpool. They require permits of all students who are parking on campus so they can identify students who are maybe illegally parking, speeding, reckless. We've added a lot of bicycle racks, we promote walking, biking, busing, carpooling. We've increased parent communication and communication about this issue. We've notified parents about the times that you've had this agenda item on City Council. We have spoken with and we have disciplined students who are parking illegally and driving unsafely. And this, we can do this for students who are parking illegally and driving unsafely in the surrounding neighborhoods as well. Education Code allows us to. So, we also would like to reach out and again, say to the neighbors that not only can you call the central marine police authority, but please do call us and let us know, or take a picture of the vehicle, and we will do the best that we can to try and assist you with this problem. So, the school's also been working with CNPA to ticket students. Mostly, this is where students are blocking access, or there's some unsafe parking or an emergency vehicle can't get through due to the limited number of staff available through CNPA to park. And at any time, and I think the principal has met a couple of times with people from Riviera Circle, and we are happy to continue to do that to address these concerns.
Councilmembers have some questions for you.
Great. Hi, Valerie. Welcome back. Valerie, I sit on the Safe Routes to School, so I have a few questions for you. How many parking spaces do you have for those students who carpool?
I do not have that number in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Okay. That'd be great to see it increase. I believe it's around 30.
Okay. And I would say, yes, it's within my ability to count as I drive up.
Yeah. So, are you promoting kids take Uber, pool, using Uber?
I do not know if we're promoting kids taking Uber pool.
That would be great.
Can you send more information to me on that?
That'd be really great. And then, but we also recommended Safe Routes to School, to David, you're the principal, that when the kids fill out their application for the following year, it'd be nice if they can put the location of their neighborhood. And then, we would, Safe Routes to School would put together a website where the kids can say, "Oh, I didn't know Johnny lived down the street from me. Maybe I can carpool with him or her." So, it'd be nice if we can maybe make that happen.
I can have that added to the application process.
So, I'd like to talk to you about that. That would be great.
Would you email me about that, Ann?
That would be great. And then, Golden Gate Transit's willing to add another bus, but they need to hear from you. So, that's something that we can work out, too.
Yes, we can.
So, there's solutions. It's just we need to work closely with the schools to make these things happen.
Okay. I look forward to doing that.
Super. Thanks.
Councilmember Way.
Valerie, thank you for outlining some of those issues. I know there's a lot of work to be done with all of this cooperatively and in community. One of the real concerns that has been expressed by members of the Larkspur Marina, which is what we're focusing on sort of now, they're the ones who brought this issue forward, is student behavior. And not just parking in, like blocking driveways, but eating their lunch in their car and leaving the garbage out, smoking pot in their car, you know, behavior like that. What issues, what opportunities is there for the high school administration to deal with that in cooperation perhaps with Central Marine PD, or what are the plans to deal with that kind of thing?
So, as I mentioned earlier, if we know it's happening and it's reported to us that it's happening, then we can bring a student in and provide consequences or have, you know, parent meetings or whatever it takes to deter the behavior. We have to know about it. I'm not yet familiar with the number of campus supervisors available, but it, probably at the beginning of the school year, I would suggest that our campus supervisors are out, trying to enforce if you do put in new regulations in the Marina. And we could, you know, we could think about sending a campus supervisor out on foot to at least have a presence, perhaps one rotation during the lunch hour, but I can't promise you that until I really understand the staffing.
Has there been discussions of prioritizing the permit allocation to the distance in which a student has to come to attend school, or is it just on seniority basis? Or do you know?
Right now, it is not even on seniority basis, but these are some of the things that we're going to be looking at. So, that's another suggestion. Senior-only parking is a suggestion, and it's clear that we're going to have to put into place some of those priorities. Okay. There's a lot of work to be done there.
Other councilmember? Councilmember Chu.
Hypothetically speaking, if this passes tonight, or say, our next meeting, then how quickly can you implement all these things?
It's, we've been prepared, we've been watching this, we've known what's coming on. I think the high school principal is prepared to send out communication. The students, as far as I know, have not registered, have not come and picked up their 2018 permit, so we could implement some of the suggestions here fairly quickly, I would think.
Vice Mayor Morrison has one more question.
So, one of the complaints in the Marina area from many of the neighbors are the kids go and they wait on Riviera across from Redwood, wait for their parents to pick them up. The parents go ahead and go around the Riviera Circle, and then they pick them up, and that causes quite a bit of congestion and traffic problem. Do you have a circle where the parents can come into the school to pick up their kids? They don't have to go into the Marina area to do so?
Yes, we do. So, we could tighten up on that or strongly encourage parents to make sure they're in that loop. Again, it's an issue of congestion.
Where is that loop, Valerie?
It's in the back in the, is it the east parking lot? It was the back parking lot.
That'd be nice to really promote that, right?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much, Valerie.
Thank you. See you soon.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item? Yes, ma'am. Please identify yourself.
Cindy Winter-Greenbree. The health and safety issues, while very real for Larkspur Marina, extend further. In my view, the attitude of Redwood towards student transportation is incompatible with environmental science. I'm sure Redwood has excellent science teachers who talk with the students in some detail about global warming, yet with a parking lot that encourages driving to school, these students get the idea that climate science does not apply to me, and in my daily life, I can forget about it if I'm lucky enough to find a parking place. Senate Bill 32 has committed the state to reducing greenhouse gases by 40% by 2030, which in historical time is just around the corner. Yet with the help of Redwood students, Marin's vehicle miles traveled keep rising. Why should the city and its residents have to bear the parking permit subsidies and variable costs? Here is my solution. Prohibit all student parking on campus. Students use Rideshare with Lyft Line or Uber Pool to go to and from the campus. And I would make the argument that these more experienced drivers with Lyft and Uber are probably much safer drivers than the students. The east parking lot is reconfigured to remove student parking spaces and substitute a large turnaround for Lyft and Uber pickup and drop-off, because they can't do it on Doordie, obviously. Today, I spoke with Hector at Andy's Market, where some 70 to 80 Redwood students buy lunch daily when school is in session. We discussed a call-in service, every kid has a cell phone these days, where orders can be placed by phone and then made available by name at a special counter Hector will set up. And then, the students can come in, and all they need to do is give their name and pick up their order and pay. That would greatly shorten the waiting around time, allowing a relaxed walk there and back. Students would not have to pile into a car, travel to Andy's at breakneck speed, look for a parking place, wait to place their order, wait while it is prepared, then reverse the fast and dangerous trip. The same arrangement might be made with cafes and sandwich shops in the other direction at the Lucky Shopping Area, and there is always the little brown bag. If the lunch recess could be increased by 45 minutes to one hour, that would give students time to buy lunch and eat at a more leisurely pace. I'd think that much better for their physical and mental health. The new Larkspur ordinance, besides making Larkspur Marina and possibly other neighborhoods much safer, might also serve as a kind of tough-love wake-up call to the high school. If Redwood is open to the idea, I hope that they and the city might work together to plan an end to student parking at the school.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm sure Ms. Pitts would like a copy of your notes. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item this evening? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Chu.
Are we going to take them separately?
Yes.
Okay.
Separate actions.
Yeah.
If you'd like to start by making a motion on the first item, is that, is okay with me?
Yeah, I mean, if you're ready for that, you know, I'd be happy to make a motion to introduce and waive ordinance 1028. Did I get the number right?
You did. You did 1028.
1028 slash 18.
Yeah.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Wait.
We're just doing the ordinance that 1028 allows us to, yeah, okay.
7.1A.
Got it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 opposed. Motion carries unanimously. 7.1B, discussion.
Want to discuss?
Councilmember Chu.
Oh, yeah. I don't have a strong preference to it, but I would still like to point out that our parking ordinance does require two off-street parking. So, one of the things I would suggest to possibly mitigate that is to issue the two permits per household as suggested for the two required on-street, off-street, on-street parking. And since we are already going to create a system by where the school can request parking permits and possibly have a standard form that the police department can fill out and, you know, email back to the school, the school has control of it, but that particular form could also be used if somebody wants to call PD because they have a lunch party or something where they expect a lot of, you know, guests, more than two or four, or whatever we decide is the number. And then, you said we're going to do the fees another time, so I won't comment on that.
But wouldn't it be?
So, or some feedback would certainly be helpful.
Some feedback? Well, you know, it's an interesting thing because, you know, the whole thing between a tax and a fee is that the fees are supposed to be for the direct benefit of the service that you're given. So, I'd like to be able to see it in an analysis, not just for which method is the best, one method being the addition to these calls for service, but the other one being the incremental cost of providing the service. cost of providing the service, because we don't know which one's going to be more or less. But within that, I think once we get a real number, then it's kind of like, okay, well, we can have a discussion, how much is the city willing to split?
Okay, you can do that. Vice Mayor Morrison.
So I walked around that beautiful Marina area, and I talked to many of the individual residents that live there. It was amazing, and I spoke to seven, and all seven said they really don't, the parking doesn't bother them at all. In fact, what does bother them is their neighbors having so many cars. One woman was saying that she owns three. Her neighbor next door that has a two-guard garage actually owns four. Another woman that I spoke with next door, they, there's one house that's on two lots, and they have five cars and do not use their garage. The one around the corner has three cars, but when their children visit, they have five cars, do not use their garage. And then another person I spoke to has three kids, kids come and visit. The neighbor has now three kids with a girlfriend, and now that has four to five cars. So I was really surprised about how many residents have more than two cars. So the problem is people don't use their garage because, as Meg says, you need it for storage. Or your car doesn't fit. So that was, that was discussed too. So they really don't want to deal with permits. They thought leaving the 20 minutes was, was good. They didn't mind that. They wouldn't mind signs throughout the whole neighborhood. That was discussed. Getting permits, this, they were concerned about, as Kevin and as Larry Chu mentioned, about the gardeners, the cleaners, the window cleaners, all, they have to get permits for them. So with all these amount of cars, I think we're in a dilemma here. So as our mayor mentioned, we probably need to have a workshop and discuss further how we're going to pursue assisting the Marina neighborhood.
So how would that look?
What would look?
How would, how would a workshop to discuss this issue, how would that transform?
Well, my intention was, I don't want to create a whole new set of costs, but I think at least another meeting where we're able to consider the issues that would apply to this program if we were applying it to other neighborhoods as well. There are a set of issues that are going to be applied in multiple neighborhoods. And then there, each neighborhood's going to have its own unique issues.
Right.
So I think we need to create a rational approach to this, that take, we take the time to be thoughtful about what it is we're doing and arrive at a reasonable considered approach here, where we take the time to hear.
Exactly. And then for those who have more than two, four cars, what do we do, what do they do about that? So that we'd like to hear from them, wouldn't we?
I don't think we know all the challenges yet we face with this.
And they really do not like the children waiting to be picked up on that corner and just loitering on this, on the sidewalks. That was mentioned multiple amount of times. And that's where the litters occurring and the loud noise, et cetera. So that's another issue is kids are being picked up in the Marina area.
He looks like he wants to say something.
City manager.
I would suggest that since I hear we're headed toward another discussion, we ask for some feedback from the Property Owners Association, because the problem that Vice Mayor Morrison's describing exists now, I, we don't have the manpower to trace who we've actually cited, but I feel confident that the citation statistics that the chief and I shared with you last meeting, we've been issuing over the course of each year, three figures worth of citations. I guarantee they're not all to students. So this problem already exists that we don't issue permits to service providers. And if, for whatever reason, we're out there, whether we got a call or we're doing enforcement to send a message to the high school students, we don't, we don't not cite a landscaping truck.
That was a discussion also.
Councilmember Wei.
Well, I, I hear your concerns, Ann, and I think it's a little unclear, the resolution as to, we haven't really fleshed out some of the big issues. The number of permits, and I really think we need to have consistency in this approach across all the neighborhoods, because even though a neighborhood may not be adjacent to a high school, they may be experiencing their own overflow impact from other businesses or something like that. So I'm not comfortable yet with this resolution without a little bit more work. I am comfortable, and I did vote for having preferential parking permits, because I think we are moving in that direction with the impact of the amount of vehicles that are owned by individuals and the businesses. We have to figure out how to reach that compromise. So I'd be interested. I also, there's something that doesn't feel right with me, that we don't have enough opportunity for the high school to have weighed in on what mitigation that they can do. And this was the first we heard tonight, was from Valerie, with some specific mitigation issues and an opportunity to flush those out in which we can cooperate with them, and they can cooperate with the neighborhood or CNPA to diminish some of these health and safety issues we haven't had a chance to do yet. So I'm supportive of continuing this into a larger and more expansive focused workshop or however we decide to arrange that.
And make sure all the stakeholders.
All the stakeholders, they need to be here. I appreciate Valerie being here, because it's the first I've heard of any of those statistics or any of those opportunities that you've taken to try to remedy it by enforcing behavioral issues with the students, so.
Councilmember Hara.
Yeah, I'm, I think at the outset of this discussion, I suggested that we might want to defer on the resolution, so that that's consistent with this. I actually like Cindy Winter's suggestion the best. So I wish we figured out a way to implement that. But, you know, I think it's, just briefly, I think it's important to keep in mind that what we're trying to accomplish here with this process is really to create a public good. There's obviously a traffic or parking management problem that exists in this neighborhood. And we may not have quite got it right this first time around. I actually kind of like the resolution. But I think it's appropriate for us to defer and get some more engagement from, from the community. But it is important to recognize that we're really trying to accomplish a good for the community with this, this management program that we'll be putting into place. And I think that should be reflected ultimately in the fee structure that we adopt. I'm sensitive to the comments that we heard tonight about, you know, the sticker shock of going from $5 to $50 on an annual basis. We may want to give some consideration to mitigating that, at least on an interim basis. But because it is something that we're doing for the public benefit and will benefit the people who live in this community, I'm perfectly comfortable with, with a fee increase. So that'd be something we can talk about when we ever set, stays there.
One last thing. I think we all, to Larry's point about having a non-ordinance, but a zone that requires two onsite parking spots.
Oh, that's, that's our parking ord.
The parking ordinance.
Our parking regulations in a residential zone.
Right. I think we all need to be aware that while we may own our property and the driveway, we don't own the street in front of our homes, and it is public use. And it's for public use, although we may find it convenient to park directly in front of our properties, it is not personal ownership of that. And so we need to balance the needs of people to move about within the city and park and attend different events or different activities on the public street. And this is a public street, and many of, many of our neighborhoods are public streets in which we're going to have to balance the needs of the residents versus the needs of the rest of the community. So I just had to put that out there.
Yeah, and it's the same with the drop off and the pickup and stuff. Those are still public streets. The real issue that we've been faced with, the primary complaint is about bad behavior.
Yeah, that's different.
So if the bad behavior went away, they, they're still allowed to walk on sidewalks in the neighborhood if, you know.
Right, and traffic.
Yeah.
Hey, Jane, it's 80 degrees in here.
Oh, come on.
Okay. I didn't cause it.
All right. So we acted on 7.1A. It sounds like the pleasure of the council is to defer 7.1B. Have I captured that correctly?
Yes.
What further action do we need on this item? Councilmember Chu has another comment?
Oh, yeah. For Superintendent Pitts, you know, I encourage you to keep going down the path of looking at this and assume that something will occur, because if we did nothing, the 20-minute parking restriction already exists. So.
Is that better?
You know, a lot of the things you brought up were things that, you know, I can literally say in my household that we've been actively involved in for over 10 years, you know, like, you know, since my daughter's been there. But we also know that the Larkspur School District implemented those things under your leadership, but it hasn't been embraced by Tampa Pius Union High School District. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei, do you have another comment?
One more comment to Valerie, that you're, you are now the temporary superintendent for five schools, the Tampa Pius. So this may set precedent for the other schools in your other area, not only Drake High School, but Tam High School. So, I mean, it would, I think it would be helpful to work cooperatively with the district, because I'm sure there are other neighborhoods in other parts of the cities affected by the Tampa Pius High School District who will see this as an opportunity to restrict parking in their neighborhoods.
Valerie, let's, you and I make contact. Yesterday at the Transportation Authority in Marin, we were talking about making resources available to help deal with this as an extension of the Safe Routes to School program, including Cindy Winter, having a reduced vehicle miles traveled contest with the kids, where they organize science clubs and see who can reduce the most vehicle miles traveled over the school year. So we think make, putting a cool branding on this might be a good idea. All right, thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. City Manager, on this item that we need to?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the direction.
Thank you very much, and thank you, those for the public comments this evening. We'll move to the business items this evening. We'll close the public hearing. We'll take a minute, if anybody wants to, I have 60 seconds to transition between agenda items. All right. All right, it looks like everybody's here for the business calendar. We have item 8.1, which is consideration of Heritage Preservation Board recommendations to amend the local inventory of historic resources to include three residential structures located at 12, 14, 16, and 22 Onyx Street. May we have the staff report? And could you start off by clarifying the authority for the decision tonight?
Yeah, so we have our Planning and Heritage staff coming out here right now. As they come out, Mr. Mayor, the placement of property on the inventory of historical resources is ultimately a council power. So the item effectively in front of you is whether or not to place the subject properties, the three properties enumerated, on that inventory. As basis for your making this decision this evening is a recommendation from the Heritage Board, Preservation Board, that you so do. And you have also the information and evidence provided to you by your historical architect. The information's coming out here now, I think.
So just to be clear, this is not an appeal hearing?
Yeah, it's been sort of mischaracterized a few times as an appeal hearing. You wouldn't be appealing the recommendation, because that's not really an appropriate process. This is actually a decision on the part of the council, whether you want to place these properties on the inventory. And so the recommendation is one piece of information or evidence in front of you as you make that decision.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Is, good evening. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you. Are we on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. So the matter before the city council tonight is to consider the Heritage Preservation, Preservation Board's recommendation to amend the inventory to include the three residential structures located at 12, 14, 16, and 22 Onyx Street on the inventory. The community character element of the general plan in Chapter 2.18 of the Larkspur Municipal Code have tasked the Heritage Board with periodically reviewing structures throughout town and the existing inventory and making recommendations to the council regarding proposed amendments to that inventory. The original inventory was adopted in 1979. The last update occurred in 2008. And when that occurred, the Heritage Board acknowledged that there were, this was not a comprehensive review and that additional upgrades or changes to the inventory might be merited. So in 2016, the Heritage Board initiated a program to conduct a more complete survey of the historic neighborhoods in Larkspur. The board expressed a desire to provide surety to property owners and home buyers as to whether or not an older home might be eligible for inclusion on the inventory. In March of 2017, after concluding their walking tour survey of Madrone Canyon, the board collectively referred 23 structures to the historic architect. Included in that referral was 12, 14, 16, and 22 Onyx. The board was aware the three structures had previously been evaluated by Dan Peterson, the former historic architect, and were not at that time recommended for addition. The council may be interested to know that there's no evidence in the city record that these buildings were actually evaluated in 1979, and they're not mentioned in the Larkspur past and present from 1979, with the exception that they are credited to the local architect, builder Gustav Nagel. So in '79, they're credited to him, and in '91, and in the 2010 Larkspur, past and present, it's a consistent credit. Of the 23 structures that the city consulting historic architect looked at in June of 2017, seven, I think I've lost my place here. In applying the, yeah, seven were determined to be eligible for inclusion, and that includes three buildings tonight. In applying the evaluation, scoring, and criteria, she determined that these buildings rated about 55 to 65 points each on the NRHP system and a B in Larkspur's category rating. The structure must be rated 50 points and a B to be eligible for inclusion. If a building is identified to be eligible, the city does have an obligation to apply historic preservation to any future development permits or any that come in during the time that this is going on. So in February of 2018, the property owners did file a redevelopment permit for their home to do some pretty extensive renovation and remodeling. Prior to filing that permit, staff did meet with their consultant and inform them that the building had been identified for possible inclusion. And in response, they did hire their own private consulting historian who evaluated the buildings and determined they were not eligible. As the property owner did not wish to be placed on the inventory and also objected to any historic evaluation of her proposed project, we decided that it might be best to offer to expedite these three buildings through the process and determine whether or not they should be added officially. So on May 10th, the buildings were heard by the, before the Heritage Preservation Board, and the board considered all the information in the record. You've been, it's been attached to your staff reports, quite voluminous. After quite a long, lengthy discussion with the different historic architects, they determined that the building's scores should actually be elevated some, and the reasoning for that will be discussed by my historic architect. She can better describe this. And they also recommended that they be included to the inventory. Because the board's recommendations are recommendations, and it takes the council to decide whether or not their recommendations should be acted upon and the building should be added, we have now brought these, this discussion forward to the council for final resolution. I have the historic architect here tonight, who is available to answer all of your questions, if you have any, regarding the evaluation and the scoring system. We recommend, as we did in the staff report, that the commission, that the council affirm the recommendation of the Heritage Board and adopt the draft resolution adding the three structures to the inventory. However, if based on the information you're provided with tonight, you determine that one or all of these structures should not be added, then of course, we can either amend the resolution to reflect your decision or not adopt it at all, because you determined none of them are eligible. That kind of concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Before I ask for questions of staff, I need to offer as disclosure my work as architect at 22 Onyx in 2008, 2009. And since I have not received any financial compensation in the last 12 months, and discussing this with the city attorney, I deem that I'm, I do not have to recuse myself from consideration. do not have to recuse myself from consideration on this item. I also have personal experience with the process and the property, so I'd be happy to share that as the discussion moves forward. So with that, are there any questions of staff regarding the staff report?
Let me just ask you about that. Are you then, well, you have the opportunity to tell us modifications that may have been done through your work on 22 Onyx?
You mean 12, 14.
No, he worked on 22.
All of the work that we did was after receiving information that the property was not considered significant, so all the improvements we made to 22 Onyx were not done with any oversight. In fact, they were not done with design review. We just did a good job.
You did actually.
And it was for a developer, it was not for a property owner at the time, so it was done totally on spec, if that matters.
You have a quizzical look, like that's news information.
I, I actually found in the record a discretionary permit application for additions to the home, so I thought that was the application that Dan was involved in.
You're correct. The additions were small, and I correct myself, whatever zoning administrative review took place at the time. It was, it was comprehensive from the city's perspective, and a job well done by all. I just, it was a positive experience, still continues to be.
Questions of staff? Vice Mayor Morrison?
So, hi Kristin.
Hi.
So you said Nagel, who's the, who's the architect, you said it is true credited, but what I've been reading, we weren't too sure.
Well, there seems to be some discrepancy in the information that's been provided. If you look at the 1979, 1991, and 2010 versions of Larkspur, past and present, there's a section on Gustav Nagel, and the list of buildings that have been credited to him by his daughter include the Onyx Street houses, all three of them. So the information that is in the, the research prepared by Mr. Cunningham, the ex Heritage Board member who assisted in this effort, he indicated that either he hadn't seen the list, or the list he saw did not include the buildings. So I guess we, if he's here tonight, perhaps he can explain the difference.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember White?
So Kristin, 1979 was the first inventory that was done and adopted.
Yes.
And then in 2008, it was revised.
Yes.
Or another inventory was done, and you said there were 27 properties at that time added?
No, how many? Well, the historic downtown was already on the inventory.
Right.
And a small smattering of single-family homes up and down the Magnolia Corridor, and a couple just, you know, around town. When, when I was given the list by the Board, it was just sort of a conglomeration of buildings they had identified over the years, and all of these were done, and I think we ended up in the end with 77 residential homes, and of those, probably 50 were added.
And at that time in 2008, if a homeowner was notified that their property was going to be added to the historic list of structures, what were their options at that time? Or do we outline options for the homeowner at that time?
We do. When we sent out the notice, we informed them of it and indicated if they object, that they have every opportunity to come in and provide us with information that would demonstrate the building didn't qualify for inclusion. And about 21 or 25 homes that had initially been recommended for addition were removed based on that whole effort of meeting. We had three to four public outreach meetings, and quite a majority of the homes, well, not a majority, but a good number of homes were deemed ineligible based on that.
And that ineligibility is based on subjective criteria, or based on not being able to provide, providing additional evidence or contrary evidence about its ability to be heritage?
Correct. They demonstrated there had been alterations that, that had undermined its original character-defining features, and that, that although it appeared old, it had been altered quite a bit and wasn't its original old design.
And then that was a process that went through planning, or did it go all the way to City Council to then confirm that? Or we just remove them from the inventory?
Well, we, we held the public outreach meetings with the Heritage Board, and then the Heritage Board, after all was said and done, determined what the final list would be, and that's when they eliminated the 21 to 25 buildings. It's hard for me to remember how many.
Okay.
And then that final list was brought forward to the council for your review and approval.
Because I, I really want to focus on process here when we get to the further conversation, and whether we have a process that is, needs updating, and that's what I'm interested in focusing on. Second question is, you mentioned in the staff report that the, you have not received any responses from the owners of number 16 Onyx and number 22 Onyx.
That's correct.
Is that still correct?
Yes.
And how were they notified?
By mail. I originally sent them a whole large manila package of information with the evaluation forms, a description of how it was being evaluated, a letter explaining what we were doing, and I received no information back from them.
We got a letter from 22, I see that, okay.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I just saw it now, so I haven't read it yet either. So essentially, we are looking at these three properties as a whole, and, but there's three separate property owners.
Yes.
And the most contact you've had is with 12, 14.
Yes.
Property owners, but the other two could, will be impacted by this decision too. I just want to make sure that they were, they had notice of everything going on.
Right, they were noticed of the board meeting, and then they were noticed of the council meeting. I sent them letters both times.
Okay. Can I see that, what are that, is in this packet? Okay.
Councilmember Harrah? Questions?
Yeah, just, so we have the one, so the, the focus of the discussion here is on the, on the one property, the 12.
Well, we brought them forward as a group because their scoring is affected by the grouping.
Right.
The, the reason that we expedited this was to assist the property owners of 12, 14 Onyx in being able to understand if they really have to be designated as historic or not.
Right, so though, they, they kind of expressed their objections to the designation. Now we, because I was going to ask, well, have we heard from the other, the owners, the owners of the other two properties? Now, apparently we have.
Well, we've heard of, we've heard from one, yeah.
For one of them at least, and they're expressing similar objections, and we just haven't heard from the third.
I had not realized that we received that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to get that clarified. Okay, thank you, that's all.
I just have one question. The city used to offer a contract with a program implementing the Mills Act that allowed tax incentives for owners of historic properties where they could receive tax relief in exchange for making improvements that were consistent with the heritage preservation guidelines of the city. What's happened to that program?
It's been frozen essentially by the City Council, probably six years ago or so. Longer than that, time flies.
Yeah, I think, so I've been here eight years, I think it was frozen the year before I got here.
And, and the reason that was frozen, there was a functional reason?
At the time, the economy had been decimated in the 2008 collapse, and this was probably early 2010s, 2012 or less, and we had an applicant come forward, and the council had decided that this was not the appropriate time to be granting these types of contracts because the primary, although the city loses tax dollars by doing so because it's reassessed dramatically, and then the tax base drops dramatically, and they get a very low tax bill, and return, and in return, they're supposed to spend that money on rehab. But the council understood that one of the biggest losers in this reduction was the schools. And so to not further hinder the school district on their financial ability to provide their services, you decided not to tender any more Mills Act contracts for a while.
So currently, there are no incentives offered to property owners from the city?
No, not in terms of financial. We did adopt some zoning amendments that are supposed to assist people who are maintaining the historic character to make improvements without having to save, apply for variances that would normally be required. It just depends on, the criteria is in the code as to what we can do. To try and expedite it, it just is called a heritage permit instead of a rehabilitation permit instead of a variance, and you don't have to make those findings. We were trying to amend the parking regulations to reduce parking requirements too, so they wouldn't have to upgrade their parking to four onsite spaces, since many of these homes, it's not feasible, and we've never actually completed the parking amendments because it became larger and larger, and eventually was put on hold for a variety of reasons.
Thank you very much.
Other councilmember questions? Councilmember Chu?
Just a couple comments, clarification. Councilmember White asked about how the process went in 2008. Yeah, you're, you're correct, just to state it more explicitly, the council was given a list of homes to approve. We were never asked to remove anything.
No, you were.
That was done for us.
So it was removed by? Right. Well, you were given the list, and, and the amended list, and, and that amended list that included changing the, the original 79 list to remove structures as well as to add new buildings. We did both.
Yeah, but we didn't do an analysis on, the council did not analyze why those properties were taken off.
No, I don't think you did.
We did a, we did not.
We did not do property by property.
No, you were given a master list, and you were informed of everything. We, we broke the lists up, so you had a list of those being removed and those being added, and then a master list that the new inventory to show what it would look like.
Yeah, and with the sales tax, it wasn't just the schools who objected to it, anybody who had a piece of this, property tax, anyone who had a piece of the property tax pie really didn't want Larkspur to make the decision to reduce their income.
I have just one last, one last question before we, I'm, tried to find what our definition of desecration is, because it does get a point scale in here. Maybe later, whoever's going to be presenting can speak to what the definition of desecration is, because I, that's part of the issue that's being discussed here, was the amount of repairs needed on this property, and whether it had desecrated beyond its historic relevance. And I would like a definition of desecration.
Okay, well, I actually have been given an education on this subject myself, but I will allow Jerry Hulan, the historic architect, to answer that.
Okay, that's all.
My last question goes to how the, how the improvements at 22 Onyx, we, we made all those improvements, we changed things pretty much throughout, kind of fixing what was out of line, replacing windows that, you know, with modern windows, and I don't know that any of it was done, we certainly weren't considering any of the guidelines, it was just how we thought we were doing the right thing. So how, given that all that work was done without any historic documentation relative to the guidelines, how can that be considered, how can those improvements be considered consistent with preservation to the, to the extent that it can be considered included, to be included now, and all the work that was done was done without historic reference?
Well, our particular program that we, we recommended to the council, and the council approved, was pretty flexible. The one primary elevation is the one we're doing the most to try and protect, which typically is the front of the home, and a lot of alterations still allowed along the side and rears. You're just trying to maintain the primary character-defining features, the roof form, the dormers that are most visible, the shape of the building, its, its traditional openings, and all of those things are still retained on the front elevation of 22 Onyx. The openings for the porch are there, they're just infilled with windows. The original window and the carriage door opening are still there, even though the door's been replaced, the opening is still there and visible, you can see and read its history. So that's why, even though you made improvements, you just happen to have done them correctly for the building not to be have, desecrated and then not eligible.
And to follow, can I follow up on that? To be clear, those requirements and, and form was a policy that was created in the 1970s and adopted in 1978, is that right? And has not been modified since?
The...
As far as what we have defined as historic?
Right, pretty much. We did certainly create a more robust and, and full program with the 2008 update. We created and amended the design review regulations to require design review for alterations to historic structures, made it more clear what does and doesn't require design review when you have a historic structure. So we did actually add a more robust review process in the 2008 update that didn't exist when they first adopted heritage preservation in 1979, with the exception of the downtown.
So, and it's, and it's the members of the, of the historic preservation committee that bring forward properties to be further evaluated?
Right.
So do we, and do we have an, is it a 50-year limit is sort of where we start with that, or we, have we made that decision yet?
Well, for our, for our purposes, the Board and the consulting historic architect agreed that really the primary era of significance would be pre-World War II, where that's when Larkspur really was established and most of the older buildings were built. So for Madrone Canyon, for instance, the list we created for them to look at was buildings all built before 1942, or 42 and earlier.
And that's in a policy, or is that?
No, the Board is in charge with creating policies and operating procedures, and they didn't really think that the City Council or the city in general would like them to evaluate buildings that were relatively new, that they thought the program was really best applied to buildings that were of a more greater period of significance. There is a provision in SEQA, and I know it's in the staff report, that it's a, by reference to California Code, that if we, if you are, have a project come in with a building that is over 50 years, 50 years of age or older, we do have to look at it for historic merit. And if it gets evaluated and we determine it has historic merit, then you, you start applying SEQA in terms of whether this is a significant loss, if they alter it to the point where it's no longer going to have it. So SEQA applies too, but we're trying to create some surety that all of these buildings have been looked at, and if a building that's 50 years or older comes in, I'll probably have an evaluation form now in Madrone Canyon and in Baltimore Park that I can say it's been looked at, it's determined to have no merit, we don't have to go through this SEQA evaluation.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
Kristin, we hired Dan Peterson to evaluate these, the home.
Yes.
And he gave it at, he gave it a 30. So why would we go back to the house if we, the gentleman that we hired gave it a 30?
The Heritage Board wanted to go back and take a look at the cities just to ensure that they had been, that all, that all the information was considered, and that the buildings that were evaluated maybe couldn't have been given a higher score, because that does happen. An evaluator in a hurry going through a list of 150 buildings might look at it and say, yeah, this is what I see, I don't, I don't think it really rates, and move on, and the Heritage Board was concerned that some of these C-rated buildings appeared to have more merit than they were given, so they wanted them to be relooked at. There's more than one building that's been looked at that had...
I understand that, I just was wondering why, why we're pursuing that.
Just following up on that quickly, for, for the group, was there a specific characteristic that was called out that changed, or was newly identified in that change in scoring? What was the citation?
You know, I prefer to have Jerry answer the question between the two scorings and why she feels her evaluation is different.
Because I would guess it's a singular thing if it's applying to a group.
I'm not sure he looked at them as a group. It's hard to know because we have that one page.
Citing the change, I'm wondering what that is. All right, Councilmember Chu?
After listening to the Heritage Preservation Board meeting and reading the staff report, it seemed like there was attribution to the residents of the properties being of historical significance, is that correct?
Right, well, the original owners of the property who are being credited with having built them were the Doliver Dool family, who is quite significant to Larkspur's early history. They donated the land for Doliver Park, and were very involved in the community, so...
So it's historical?
So in terms of who owned it or may have built them, yes, and then in terms of age and in terms of architectural integrity, there's a variety. And then, of course, who, who's being credited for having constructed them physically is Gustav Nagel, who was a known and, and notable architect builder in Larkspur, is responsible for a lot of notable buildings in town, including 105 King across the street.
Other questions? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this? this agenda item? Please step forward and identify yourself for the record.
I actually have a presentation, so with your permission, I'd like to get out of the way here and move this.
Could you please identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, my name's Riley Hurd. I represent the property owners at 12 and 14 Onyx Street. I'll just... Can I move? Yeah. Thanks.
Did you miss that window, I think?
Good evening. My name's Riley Hurd. I represent the owners of 12 and 14 Onyx Street. And actually, before I formally begin, I'd like to request a few minutes of rebuttal time, just to respond to any public comments, if that's acceptable to the mayor?
Without objection of the council?
Okay. Thank you. So, before jumping into points and tests and evidence, I'd like to start with the big picture and fill in that timeline for you. In 1979, the city does its first historic inventory. This property wasn't on it. In 1998, my clients decide they're going to make their dream come true and buy a home in Larkspur. Before they do so, they review the city files and determine the home is not listed on the inventory. In 2006, as you heard, the city decided it's going to update the inventory. To achieve this, historic architect Dan Peterson is hired. And with the endorsement of the council, he develops an updated and detailed scoring system for deciding which homes belong on the inventory. Mr. Peterson then applies his own system to 12 and 14 Onyx and determines the home warrants a score of 30 points, nowhere even close to the 50-point threshold for listing. Now, this is no big deal for my clients. His findings simply back up their diligence. Now, fast forward to 2017, when the owners have finally saved for and developed a plan for a subtle remodel, not a tear-down, but something that carried over a lot of the quaint features of the home. When they submit their application out of left field, now they're told, "Hold on a minute. We're going to reconsider your house again for a third time. So you need to go to the preservation board, you need to pay our consultant to look at your house again." So setting aside the total unfairness of this timeline, the outcome of the third analysis is nothing short of shocking. The new consultant decided to more than double the score, up to 65 points. So we have a home that's a 30 in 2006, but somehow in 2018, the same house, nothing's changed, under the same system, system hasn't changed, is now a 65 and supposedly eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. If you have any experience with the preservation world, you would know a recommendation that this simple craftsman bungalow somehow warrants national listing is a ridiculous outcome. It's an outcome that strains the credibility of the whole analysis, and it's actually one that imperils your process, the other homes. You don't want to dilute this system. So the question was asked, "What changed? How do you double the score? Did we find out George Washington slept here?" No. There was no new verifiable evidence. You see, there was a ton of research done. Richard Cunningham's here, he did most of it, but it didn't yield anything with certainty. So the repeated reason we heard about why there was this third look, which you asked again tonight, was supposedly that when Dan reviewed it in '06, he left a note saying "You should do more investigation." That is not true. Not for this house, and I'll show you. Here are the notes. He did leave a note about that, but he left it for '16 and '22. Here it is. "These may warrant more investigation." Here's the note for 12. It's not there. Why? Can't say for certain, but perhaps it was because at that point, 12 and 14 have been changed much more significantly than the others. So the whole impetus for this third look is incorrect. So before we jump into the scoring, just a quick reminder on evidence for you to consider. It's pretty intuitive. Municipal decisions need to be based on actual evidence. The DOI went a little further and said speculation's not acceptable. So all I would ask of you is, for each category we go through, ask, "Is it speculative or is it evidence?" This is the score chart. You already know it, but just a reminder, 50 points is the threshold, and that's the listing, the difference between being listed or not. Here's a comparison of the scores between Peterson and Holon. The biggest jump is in the first category, 300% increase. There's also 100% increases in construction and resources. The builder and quality categories were initially scored at zero, but changed on the fly at the HPB meeting. Finally, we have this one here, integrity setting. This is supposed to be a summary of the previous two categories. It's not a place for new points at all, but five points were added there, which I will discuss later. So at the end of the day, if you're very generous, this home is maybe a 25 or a 30. It's probably less, but it's definitely not a 50. It's certainly not a 65, and it's not a national historic resource. So, I'd like to jump into the scoring. It follows the charts, which I've handed out in front of you for your comparison, and I ask you to bear with me, because there's a lot of detail in these categories. But the first one's probably the most important, because that's the big change. It's historical significance. This had the biggest swing. If you agree with our interpretation, this category alone, if you give it an accurate score, renders the project ineligible for listing. So the question here is, is it associated with the life or activities of a major historic person? I won't spend a bunch of time on it, but the Doliver Jewels, under the DOI criteria, aren't a major historic person, but it doesn't matter. You put it aside, the fact is, there's no real evidence that the Doliver Jewels are connected to this house. Mr. Cunningham took a real deep dive into this and actually made a very valiant attempt to determine a relationship, but in his words, "There was no definitive answer." He points out that this family had property on different portions of Onyx Street, and you simply can't identify where their bungalows were. That's stated here. Do you know that there is not a single instance where the Jewel Doliver name is associated with this house? Not one. In fact, it's the Fredericks that appear on early property surveys. So the National Park Service has issued a bulletin that covers exactly this point, and their language is very clear. I'll just read it. Speculative evidence shall not be considered to prove historical association. You need proof. So what do we do with this lack of information? A score of 20 points is issued for this category, and the stated basis is an unqualified statement, "All the homes were built as rentals by the Jewels." Where is the evidence for that? And in fact, Mr. Cunningham tells us, "There is no definitive answer." 20 points requires an intimate connection to be proven. There's none. But even if you stretch it for a loose connection, which is right here, you could give it 10 points. So I'm going to keep a little score tracker for you here that bookends the two possible scores for this home. You've got the generous and the actual. So we're at a 10 and a 0. Next, style. This category asks, "Is it a noteworthy example?" No. Sole survivor? No. Transition? No. Is it a very early example of a particular style? If you just read the bullet points, this is a 0. But the scoring choices are a little bit different. So you could give a 10 and say, "Maybe this is a good example of very early craftsman bungalow architecture." So, we'll give it the 10. So now we're at a 20 or a 10. Next, construction. This one saw 100% increase, and the questions asked are, "Is it a noteworthy example of a method of construction?" No. "Is it a rare survivor?" No. "Is it a very early example of a method of construction?" That's the only one it could be. Well, it's an older home built out of wood. So, I found the construction methods, which this is about to be of no particular interest, I gave it a 0, but if you deemed it interesting, you could stretch and give it a 10. So now we're at a 30 or a 10. Here's a big one, probably for me, because I think this category, architect builder, is the most troubling for the integrity of the city's process. No one knows who built this house. Nobody. That's a fact. No one knows. If we had proof, we'd see it. In 2009, Mr. Cunningham writes a memo, "I found no documentation for the attribution that this is a Nagel house." 2017, he emails the planning department and says, "Hey, I want to remind you, I've found no documentation. I also want to let you know that when it said that in Larkspur past and present, that was an accommodation among the authors. It's, you know, a little bit questionable." So finally, in 2017, he seeks to put this issue to rest, his latest memo. All of his research cannot identify the builder's identity. Then he notes that there's a list of Nagels' work, and that these are not on the list, thereby implying that the home is not a Nagel. So we've got implications that it's not, and no proof that it is. What gets done with that information? Five points are added, on the basis that a local historical publication, Larkspur past and present, confirmed that it's a Nagel. It... You know, I don't understand how this happens, or what's going on here. I don't think we're maybe going to even answer that tonight. We're sticking to the merits. But this category has got to be a 0. Next, quality. What they're talking about here is architecture quality. Is it excellence, a curiosity, some detail of particular interest? No, not really, which is probably why the original score for this, by the city's current historic architect, was 0. But again, at the board meeting, they decide on the fly to change it to 5. Don't have time to go into all of these, so I'll just stick with it for my scoring. So we've got a 35, and in real life, we have 15. Okay. Here's a part that's a little confusing. I want to break it down a little bit. It's architectural integrity. This is made up of two subcategories. Desecration, which is changes to the home, and condition, which is different. Does it need repair? Things like that. This is a section in which points can only be removed, not added. So, in support of making no deduction whatsoever, Ms. Holon states, "The home has no loss of massing, with porch opening, eve details, fireplace intact, and that its original doors, windows, and carriage openings remain." False, objectively. Now, had my clients not been able to locate these old photos of the original home, these statements might have been held up, continued to be held up, as the facts that they were asserted to be. I find that very concerning. You can see here, it's simply not true. The whole front porch has been enclosed and made part of the house. If that's not a massing change, I don't know what is. But I'll also tell you, there is not one, one, single, original door or window opening on the front or the side. Not a single one. False. So, here's some pictures. These two windows, those are new. The porch has been enclosed and become actually a room in the home with all new windows across the front. Garage door's been changed. You can see this new addition over here. You can see the deck and guardrail on the side, more going on. This whole thing is new. The windows are new. This window opening's new. This door opening's new. This window opening's new. This whole place here, this chimney used to go all the way down, you could see the whole thing. Yet we've got no points being taken off here, because we are told that the window openings and the door openings are in the same place. It's not true. And these were not very early changes that somehow became a part of this. At least, some of these were done well post-World War II, the standard we heard about. So, the long and the short of it is, this house has been drastically changed, and we proved it with the photos. So what does that do to the score? You could argue it destroyed the character, but you don't even need to go there. If you believe the two floors and the additions have slightly changed in character, you have to subtract 15 points. Ms. Holon knew this. We got a copy of a draft worksheet she wrote. She put minus 15 right here. The staff knew this. They sent an email to Ms. Holon, said, "Hey, I think you need to assign some desecration reduction here for this particular property." Yet at the end of the day, none was given. So, this is a minus 15. So now we're back down to a 20, and in real life, as I call it, a 0. Second category, condition. It's pretty straightforward. Is it in good repair? Does it need major repairs? Or is it dilapidated? I'll start by telling you, "The front foundation has completely failed and needs to be replaced." I do not know a single homeowner that does not consider foundation replacement a major repair. But that's not it. All 19 windows on the front of the home have been screwed shut, they rotted, there's no ventilation, the garage door rotted, it's braced, the windows failed on the south, the entry doors rotted. There's really no way to dispute that it's a minus 5. So here we are, 15 and 5. This might be the most important one, given what's being presented here and what we're hearing about the three homes together. This is called architectural setting, and I think this is interesting, because this is the place where you can assign points for homes that are similar, that are together, but that aren't a district. This is not a historic district, everybody agrees with that. It is part of a grouping of similar styles or eras. So Dan Peterson, you know, he knew about this concept, and he gave you a way to assign points for it. We're assigning the full 10. So, plus 10. Yes, they are similar, and that's what they get for it, 10 points. So now we're at a 25 and a 5. Here's where it gets interesting, perhaps. It's not really a better word. The integrity setting of the score sheet, and this is why I wanted you to have them in front of you. Here's Dan Peterson's sheet. This is an adjustment. It's supposed to summarize the addition of... Well, it's really a deduction for desecration and condition, and an addition for setting. It's not a place for new points, and his scoring guide says that. Four criteria are tallied, 1, 2, 3, 4. Down here, you can even add up his column. You know, you've got 5 here and 25 here, that's 30. If you were supposed to add another 5, he would have given it a 35. So, it's a summary. What happened in 2018? A big, big, big change. The integrity and setting summary has now been pulled out, a whole new range of score options placed below it, and five additional points awarded for a category that doesn't even exist. So, I scoured the record. I thought, you know, "This must have been a sanctioned change by the council, must have come before you." I didn't find anything. So, here's another 5 points pulled out of thin air that doesn't belong in this score. How did we get from a summary to a place where you could maybe even add 20 or subtract 10? That's not what this is for. So with all this in mind, final cumulative score, generous, 25. If you're sticking to my evidentiary standard, what can you prove? It's a 5. I think it's really interesting that Dan Peterson pretty much got it right in 2006, albeit in a different avenue to get there. But there is no doubt, this is not a 50, and definitely not a 65. So I'm really glad the question was asked. Why does this matter? Why don't you just want to be historic? Well, we know you're not getting a Milzack deduction, so that's a... Well, we know you're not getting a Millsack deduction, so that's off the table. But I just, it's difficult to hear it stated that flexibility is applied to homes that are listed. It wasn't the case here. A very modest remodel was sought, and when it was, they were told, hey, you know the person that just scored you this? Now you have to pay us to have them look at your project and dissect it and tell you all the things you can't do. And a report was issued. I have it here. And it says, you can't update your windows. You can't lift the home to fix the foundation. You can't touch the trim. You can't really do anything. So I would get that if this was a critical resource where the precise look had to be preserved, but it's not the case here. So I will wrap up. My conclusion is that when you, as a council, decide to place a home on the inventory and take away what are major property rights, that's what's going on here. There needs to be substantial, verifiable evidence. Will it always be perfect? No. We're talking about 1900s, late 1800s, but there's got to be something. People's impressions and speculations aren't evidence. I don't know about the other homes. I did not look into those. You very well maybe are going to list those. I don't know. But this one is a no-go. We heard it again tonight. The purpose of the inventory is to limit unexpected surprises. Here they checked in advance, and they even got a secondary confirmation in '06 from Peterson, and now here we are. So there's got to be a point where someone can rely on the rules and the inventory and not have the rug pulled out. So obviously, we would urge you not to list this home. But I'd like to come with a second request, which is that the process be looked at for those that come after my clients, and really so that preservation can continue, because if things like this keep getting added, it dilutes the inventory and exposes the process and list to liability. And I think it's best to really focus on those ones that you're sure about. So thank you. Our consulting historic architects here to answer questions. I wouldn't take but more than a minute or two after people speak to respond, and I'm open for questions, because I've spent way too long on this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there other members of the public that would like to make, ask questions or make comments on this agenda item? Please step forward, identify yourself for the record.
Dennis Gilardi, 250 Hawthorne. I can only get my arm up this high because I'm still in therapy for surgery on my shoulder, but I can use my left hook. Now, I only want to comment in Larkspur past and present. It's a history book, and I learned from my aunt, her niece, who's retired, who's passed away now a couple of years ago. She was a librarian for her lifetime, graduated from Stanford, PhD, stuff like that. She said, when I asked her a question about family history, she said, what does it matter? Write it the way you want it to be today. And I contest for a fact that the book is great, but the accuracy is been created as it went along. The sections in there discussing the Rainbow Meat Market, AKA the Larkspur Meat Company, founded by Andrew Gilardi, my grandfather, is totally inaccurate. Most of the information was provided by Charlie Young, who was a partner in the meat market with my mother, actually started with my grandfather after World War II because he could not find a job in his area of interest, which was printing. My grandfather took him in. My grandfather came here in 1922. Fast forward. Yes, it was a meat market. Yes, Charlie worked there. Yes, most of it is accurate. Maybe if I had to give it a percentage, I'd give it about a 75%, but it's not absolute accurate. I never argued it. I never presented it to Charlie. I respected him. He trained me to be a third-generation butcher. So it is a history book, and the history is a recollection of people who were interviewed over the last 30, 40 years. So take that little bit of history, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? Laura, and then Dick.
Hello, council members. My name is Laura Effle. As you know, I live in Larkspur. In fact, on Onyx, across the street from these three houses. My husband and I wrote a letter asking that you not list this property. Our letter was written before we saw Riley Hurd's letter and presentation. His is much more direct and to the point. I'd like to point out, though, one thing. I did say near the end of the letter that Jerry Holon persuaded the preservation, the Heritage Preservation Board to recommend this property. And the reason I say that is that I read the draft minutes of the May meeting. They remain draft minutes because the board hasn't met again to vote on those minutes. Well, now I see that there are additional, there's a revision of those minutes that was presented to you, and they're different from the ones I read. I don't know which is which, but I certainly think you should be skeptical about the written minutes that you've seen. You do have the option of listening to the two hours, another two hours of torture, I'm sorry to say, but that's how it is. Also, this afternoon, as I was sitting on my porch with a neighbor, Vice Mayor Morrison came by. She was looking at these houses, and she stopped to say hello, and she said, she asked the question, well, what's the problem with being listed? I don't know. We were both sitting there, and you asked the question. My answer to that question is, it's a serious financial problem for most people, unless you happen to be a young couple who just bought 22 Onyx, which has been beautifully remodeled, nothing wrong with it now. Why would you think you ever had to fix it again and pay to have all those things done? So maybe you wouldn't mind being designated. But it turns out, those people sent a letter objecting to this, too. Now, if you look around the room, there are a lot of people here with signs like this on. Practically everybody on Onyx Street is here, objecting to this designation. One of the reasons we object to it is because of the look that we're talking about. Attached to the letter that my husband and I sent in are three different drawings that are similar in character so that you can compare them. The original look of the house, the current look of the house, and the proposal made by the current homeowners. There is no question that if you designate this house in its present form, you are making it impossible to improve the look. You're asking to preserve the worst look you could possibly have on that house.
I'm Genevieve Ames, and I live in the Yellow Victorian on Onyx Street, and just Ruth and Alan's house is just down from me. We moved there in 1995. They moved a few years later. I've known them for like 20 years, and they're a delightful couple, and I know they're going to make that house beautiful. Very much what you said, Dan, number 22, we did extensive repairs on our house because, like Ruth and Alan, it had no foundation. You take a wall out, there'd be, you know, the walls would push out, the windows wouldn't open. They had all, single pane, you know, where you, anybody that wanted to come into the house could break the window. But we did extensive repairs, but we didn't change the look of the house. And the planning department worked with this over a period of, really, we did three remodels, so over a number of years. What I object to, I absolutely do not want you to list 1214 on the historical heritage list. I object, my main objection is not because the house is falling down and because if they don't, you know, if they don't do something, it's just going to get more disrepair. My main objection is because I object to the way it was done. I object to the process. I object to the not paying attention to the rules and regulations or changing them at convenience. That's not, that's not the way to do things in Larkspur or anywhere. So as a good citizen of Larkspur and a good neighbor of Ruth and Alan and representing all of Onyx Street, I object to listing this on the heritage for that reason. The process is flawed. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Caitlin Pike, and I live at 22 Onyx with my family. And we also object, and we strongly support our neighbors at 1214. I feel that, you know, our house, we were lucky enough to move in after the work has been done, although there certainly will be foundation work, you know, in the near future, that substantial work that will need to be done. But there's certainly not remodeling that needs to be done in the main living area. But I feel the case that has been made is a weak one for adding it, for adding all three of these houses to the inventory of historical homes. I think ours presents the strongest case, and I still don't feel like it is strong. I think what has been presented as the case is that all three are part of a look, right, a historic era. And they are, they're charming houses, and we love Larkspur because it has many of these charming homes. But they do not have, there's no strong evidence that anybody of historical importance to Larkspur lived in these homes or built these homes. And I feel like there are already a number of homes from this era with similar architecture already on the inventory. And I think to have, you know, a strong and valid program, we can't be adding just anything. So I want to go on record as saying we do not support any of the homes, any of those three homes being added.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Way has a question.
Kristin, can I ask you just to clarify a question for me? Other than a district where we had the historic downtown, were there ever in the 2006 revision, a cluster of homes taken as a unit? Or do you recall? Or were they taken usually individually?
We pretty much, we pretty much evaluated everything individually, and most of the homes currently on the inventory are based on their architectural merit, not so much who lived there.
But we don't have any other currently that's been reevaluated that is a three-part home, a three structures contiguous with each other?
There's only one, and that's the King Street Trio that's currently on the inventory.
From 1979 or?
They're from '79.
Okay.
Then Dan did evaluate a grouping of homes by 116 Magnolia. There was a family that they had sort of developed all the houses around it. But some of them were, had undergone some desecration, and he didn't want to add those in, but the primary homes are on the inventory.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this item? Yes, sir. Please step to the microphone and tell us, identify yourself for the record. How many additional speakers are there this evening? Just one? Two? More than two? Okay, we're going to close it after the following two.
Good evening. I'm Robert Miltner. I'm the husband of my wife Laura at 11 Onyx. I've been looking at this house for almost 50 years, bought the 11 Onyx in '70. And I've seen, in fact, I've been in all three of these houses, known people who lived in them, and watched them get improved, except for this one, 1214. This is sort of like the horse that didn't get out of the barn, you know? The other two have been sold many times, several times, been remodeled, but this one's been, had been a rental until Ruth and Alan came along, as far as I remember. I knew one of the original owners, and maybe not the original owner, but I didn't know her, but she was renting the house at the time, and she'd been around a long time. It's had most of those women who owned properties, their husbands had died, and they didn't do anything with the houses. They just began to deteriorate. She had been there long enough to tell me that my house was built on a stream bed, which made a lot of sense because I've had water problems forever under there. And it's all better now. I remember looking at this house before I got to know a little more about it through Ruth from outside and with Tom Schmidt, who had lived at 2 Onyx, and we were kind of afraid the thing was going to fall down. This goes back to the 80s. It just hasn't had any real work done, other than the changes that have been talked about already, the enclosure. It is really, it really doesn't even, to me, and I'm not the person to know about it, I was surprised that they were considered a part of, as a group. It just, maybe it's because, I mean, this has been painted and all that now, but it, there's just a lot of things about it that don't seem to be worth preserving. Although Alan, nothing, nothing has been said about Alan. Alan is an outstanding contractor. He builds houses in Belvedere, Tiburon, all around Marin. And I kept wondering, why doesn't Alan work on this house? And now we've got a chance. He's going to apply his professional expertise, and he's a very sensitive guy, so is Ruth, in her own way, they're both artists. They will not desecrate this property. And as a member of the community right there on Onyx, I can speak, I think, for everybody. We'd like to see the house look and be in a better condition than it is now. So please vote no on listing 1214. Thanks.
All right, if you could, I appreciate the emotional support. Let's try to hold the applause. Are there other members? Mr. Cunningham and then Mr. Holmes.
Good evening. I am Richard Cunningham, 346 West Baltimore. I live a few blocks from this, and so I'm very familiar with the Onyx Street and several of the neighbors there. Riley Hurd gives very persuasive arguments, and I'm not going to really speak to that. I am concerned that I am misattributed at one point. I wrote a nine-page memorandum on the history. I wouldn't be surprised if you hadn't read it. It's buried at page 43 of the staff report. So one of the qualifications that he cited is my own qualification as to a newspaper article, and I said, this isn't sufficient basis to make the determination. What I do want to emphasize, though, was something that was missed. At the earlier appearances before the Historic Preservation Board, and it was referenced a little bit by Mr. Hurd, that we didn't have any basis to connect Ellen Doliver and her husband, William Jewell, to the house. That's simply not right. It's a great misunderstanding. I'm not going to speak to the rest of what's gone on tonight, but it's very clear But it's very clear that, that the Doliver family acquired the land in 1888. They owned it, it then passed to their, to their daughter Ellen. Ellen married William Jewell, so she became Mrs. Ellen Doliver Jewell. That couple owned the land during the time these houses were built. The houses weren't taken out of their estate until after Ellen's death and they were, they were sold in 1928. So for the, from the period 1888 to 1928, these homes were owned by the Jewell-Doliver couple. So we can't say they, they weren't associated with it because obviously it was built on their land. The homes were built about 50 feet away from the back door of Ellen Doliver Jewell's residence. So unless the Russians came in and built the houses or something. They were clearly built by these people. That's, that's also suggested by the references in our city minutes downstairs. I spent about three days with those lovely old handwritten ledgers. And it's quite clear that William Jewell came before the city council in 1914 at least three different times to discuss the grading of Onyx Street out in front of his house. And, and the last mention is that he received permission from the city to put it, to install a concrete sidewalk in front of his premises. The conclusion's inescapable. The Jewell-Doliver couple built these three houses and it was quite probably in that 1914 period. I, I don't want to discuss the rest of this because there's a lot of real issues involved. But I think the history is considerably more clear than, than Mr. Hurd's otherwise excellent presentation gave it credit. Questions to me from you?
Any questions? Thank you for your comments. Mr. Holmes?
James Holmes, Larkspur. Maybe the saddest aspect of this case is that the applicant seemed to have scared all of their neighbors and maybe themselves into thinking that the house can't be repaired and renovated if this becomes a B classification. That is absolutely not true. Many, many B-rated houses have been successfully renovated. And as the mayor has indicated, he was directly involved in one process. And so he, he can attest that it is possible to do extensive work and yet maintain the exterior almost exactly the same as it always was. And I can personally attest to that. It looked the same before when the hurlberts added it.
Now, since you brought me into this, I get the chance to clarify my comment.
Oh, certainly, certainly. But I, I, I-
My comment makes the point of exactly the opposite.
It, it looks to me exactly the same.
That it's perfectly reasonable to expect that these homes can be improved without necessarily having the constraints of the Heritage Preservation Board.
Yes, yes. But on the other hand, if, without those constraints, if one doesn't have the taste and discernment of the owners and the mayor, one has no assurance that it is going to be done in that fashion. The, the fact that these houses can be completely repaired rebuts the argument that points should be deducted for poor repair. The owners have indicated that they want to repair it. We should certainly believe them. And it makes no sense to deduct points for what is basically a temporary condition that the owner can and says they will, in fact, correct. Also in connection with repair, there's also no evidence that a changed historical classification would substantially interfere with the homeowner's reasonable plans. And in fact, if you look at the proposed, proposed drawings that were provided in your, your packet, it doesn't look like there's a substantial difference. So there's zero evidence of major prejudice as a result of a change in the classification. Yes, it's always better to get the classification right the first time. Mistakes are inevitable when original classifications are part of a rapid citywide effort. Some evaluations were superficial and some were missed. But the two key important points are, number one, there's no evidence of substantial actual prejudice as a, as a practical matter. And number two, as a legal matter, homeowners, of course, don't have a, a property right in a zoning or regulatory classification. It's also clear the homeowner is not being singled out for some special burden. On the contrary, reclassification is needed in order to treat this house the same way as similar houses. The Heritage Board, in reaching its decision, reviewed these pictures of a B-rated house that is very similar, my old family home, which is weaker both architecturally and historically than the Doliver home, but still is a B. And the council, if it would like, is welcome to look at these pictures, which also show the 1935 version. So you can see changes that were made between the '30s and, and the '60s, which nevertheless did not disqualify it. Would the council at this time like to look at these pictures? And I, I won't elaborate on the similarities and differences, but I'll be happy to do that afterward if you'd like to. But as this picture also proves, not only is B status not an unreasonable burden, but it is necessary to avoid giving one homeowner a grant of special privilege in comparison to another homeowner. As this example also shows, modifications over the years are not desecrations that should preclude B status. On the contrary, modifications like enclosed porches at both the homes residence and, and this residence reflect a key trend in Larkspur history, the conversion of summer homes to full-time houses in the twenties and thirties. And likewise, the changes on the, on the lower floor, the larger windows, indicate how this house was made into an apartment down below in order to create housing at the time of the great need for housing in World War II. So this has, this shows the reflection of, of Larkspur's history as, as it goes forward. And points should not, another thing that is, is not true is that this is just a standard craftsman bungalow, though it does have standard craftsman details. On the contrary, it and the two other houses are unique because they are built up to the sidewalk with garages below, very much more like San Francisco homes. So what you basically have is a craftsman bungalow, a suburban craftsman bungalow, yet an urban San Francisco townhouse-type profile, unique in Larkspur to my knowledge. And that, and this uniqueness actually was not reflected in the point system, so that I think it should get more points rather than less on that account. Finally, it is simply not true that the original owners and builders are unclear as, as has been pointed to you. Nor is it tru, and, and that, this point is explicitly addressed in your Larkspur History Book. I can show you where it is. And, and it's not just Ellen Doliver Jewell and, and her husband, Mr. Jewell, but also the Doliver, Ellen Doliver Jewell's brother, who, according to the book here, finished the project after, for her, his sister, that was Sewell and Doliver, finished it for Ellen Doliver after, after Jewell died. So the association with the Dolivers and Jewells is both multiple and explicit. And additionally, there is no reasonable basis to doubt, based on your book, that the three houses were built by well-known builder Gustav Nagel. The book specifically says the Nagel Larkspur structures, identified on the opposite page, were verified by his daughter Edna Nagel, his great-granddaughter Jane Doherty, and by county records. And if you look at the opposite page, you can see six, 12, 16, and 22 Onyx. And I can show you this if you would like. Now, perhaps some would like to think that Larkspur's history book-
Could you, could you remind me of the printing date on that edition?
Yes, sir. This is the latest, this is the latest edition.
2010?
And 2010, yes.
So Mr. Peterson had the benefit of that text.
Mr. Peterson did have the benefit of that text. And, but this, this remains the definitive, this remains the definitive source. Perhaps some would like us to believe that, that Larkspur's history book is, is fake news or fake history. Please don't believe that. It provides ample, substantial evidence that these three houses, as a group, deserve B status as early craftsman houses with unique features, intact historical details, modifications reflective of Larkspur's history in the twenties through the forties, and strong associations with a key Larkspur family and a key local builder. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor Helmer, I just want to clarify. Dan Helmer did not have that-
Dan Peterson.
I'm sorry, Dan Peterson did not have the 2010 Larkspur past and present. It wasn't written yet when he evaluated the buildings, which were done in 2006.
So that portion of the book was not available to him?
Yeah. We had a 1991 version, which had very little information about the three houses. The 2010 text wasn't written when he evaluated the homes. Yes, he did know they were Nagel buildings, to the best of my knowledge. I never asked him.
All right. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Oh, that's right, we allowed you to-
It's 9:30.
Be the last person.
I'll be brief, thank you.
Staff?
Let the council know, in case you had any questions for Jerry as well, because I know Riley is asking for rebuttal time. So we do have her here to answer any questions on the scoring. You did get a memo, which I think explains a lot of her points. So we just, before closing the hearing, I know Riley wanted to be able to-
I'd be pleased to let anybody speak that would like to speak.
That's really up to the council if you have any.
Sure. All right, Riley, then, Ms. Holland.
Okay, I'm happy to have her go first in case there's something we need to respond to. Thanks.
Well, we'll do our best to be fair. But new information, please.
Yes, sir. Okay. So I'd like to respond to Mr. Holmes first, very briefly. I've read the report that says what you can't do and I'll give you a very brief summary of it because this home was already analyzed as historic in the context of the proposed remodel. Everything on the front was deemed original material. Windows, trim, siding, garage door opening size. They can't take another car off the street. All of that was deemed original and said, you had to keep it. The garage door needs to appear the same size. The lift of the home was deemed to not keep the spatial relations with the other two historic homes. How are you going to fix the foundation if you can't lift the home? So yes, it's a big problem for fixing the house. Next, Mr. Cunningham. And I got to tell you, I respect his work and I read every page of the memo buried in your packet. And I don't disagree with what he's saying. So I'm looking at it through a different lens, which is the lens of the evidence that's required. Did they own the land? It, it looks like they did. But they got the Doliver house. They didn't live in these. They lived up the street when they were here. They're from the city. So now we got a tertiary connection to the supposedly critical family. And my question is, does associated with mean intimately connected? Because I brought this back up, because that's why she gave it 20. Intimate connection. That's not an intimate connection if you own some land down the way where you had some rental bungalows that were subsidiary to your vacation house. So that's my point. I agree with Mr. Cunningham. I just disagree on the evidentiary standard that's required for the awarding of points. Long and the short of it is, even if you give it 10, by my score, you can add five here, add 10 here, subtract five from mine, subtract 10. We're so far off the 50 that that, it just doesn't matter in terms of being on the inventory. Thank you.
One question.
Excuse me, Mr., one question. You showed two photographs that were in your packet.
Yes.
There were photographs mentioned in the auditory recording of the meeting in May. And they were not available to be seen by us because they were retrieved by the historic architect representing the family. Are those, were those two images you showed us, part of those that were retrieved?
Yes. So just a little bit of history is those were obtained from the people my clients bought the home from. They are very private. And finally, an agreement was reached. You may have seen some blurring.
Yeah, it looks like a ghost is standing there.
Those were the people that used to live there. And so we blurred them out and said, we've really got to put these into the record here and not just take them away. And so that's how I was able to place them in my letter. I wasn't at the HPB meeting, but my understanding is they were pretty much, you know, not really meaningfully considered.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? We're not sending out gold-lettered invitations. If you want to speak, now's the time.
I'm Dave Slopak. I was the postman in Madrone Canyon from 1970 to 2013. And I had one question. So all these houses are lumped together, three of them. So if there's extensive work done to 22, that all there is, it would take it off the register, does that take all three of them off?
All that information's before us tonight to consider.
Okay, because I can attest to a lot of work that was done on 22. I actually hired the, the electrician and the plumber that did the work on the bathrooms and the electrical work in 22. I was, also hired a contractor named Peter Defremery, who owned 16. And I know that he did extensive work on the foundation of 16 because the whole house was going to wash away. And he also said the same thing was going to happen to 14, 12 and 14. 12 and 14 were rentals when I started. And I know that the downstairs was a separate rental. There was like a family that rented the whole house, it seemed, but there was, and it was rented as 12 and 14. So at some point then, the house was changed from 12 to 12 and 14. So a lot of things had to occur, which would be the downstairs would have to have like a kitchen, maybe a bathroom put in. So those things would be changed as well. So it's not like it was the way it was built. And also, and also, like, the house needs a foundation. There's, and then your consideration with windows. If you can't change single-pane windows on a house that faces west when that sun comes down, because my house faces west further back up in the canyon, it gets so hot that it's unbearable. I had house, I had candles across my living room that would sit on a mantel. And when the sun came up in the morning, they would, they would actually bend in half. And so we hired, you know, we got permits and everything to remodel our house. And the double-pane windows that were put in solved that problem. And I think that it's just not fair to make people suffer with, with a home that, you know, that has unbearable conditions due to the age of the single-pane windows, for instance. Okay, thank you so much.
Number two, you have questions for the city's consultant?
I didn't have any specific questions. What I'd like to hear is her analysis.
Well, okay.
Because it's, there's such a huge gap that it's not reconcilable in my mind right now.
Very good.
Hello. I'm the infamous Jerry Holland. I too would like at least a brief opportunity. I think the mischaracterization of the process by Riley Hurd is unfortunate and I think there's been a lot of misstatement of facts. This house has been extensively researched and reviewed and looked at by a number of people in Larkspur who have experience- people in Larkspur who have experience directly with these things, and I think we have all come to a pretty good conclusion, um, as to the points that we have given it. I can go through the point system with you, as I have with the board, as I have with staff, if you'd like to see how we got to our points, section by section. First and foremost, the difference was on the historical significance, and that was the relation to the Doliver Jewell family. We do not believe Dan Peterson, the former preservation consultant, had any idea of that relation. We do now have it, thanks to Dick Cunningham. He did know they were Nagel-built, and I think those were the two, that was the main difference, and I think the second biggest difference, which was a 10-point spread, was on the construction differences. And I think that is the difference. These are craftsmen homes, and I, I think he just kind of looked at them and said, okay, craftsmen home, and he did think that 22 was rather special, but he didn't look at them together as a whole, and when you look at them together as a group, their architectural, architectural style is more important than their individual details. And when you have three craftsmen home by the same builder right next to each other, when they're all kind of the same craftsman style, they're all, but each one is unique, and that to me is a very interesting construction technique and/or difference. And so you can analyze the roofs, the windows, the siding, the garage door openings, they're all different, but they're all in the same pattern. And I think this is a very unique grouping in that you have three of them together with a lot of integrity. And we need to talk about the difference of what desecration is and integrity is. Desecration is the actual loss of a feature. If the roofs had been lopped off and made flat roofs, if the siding had been torn off and made stucco, that would be a loss of a feature, and that is desecration, and that would warrant negative points. Neither Dan Peterson nor I gave this home negative points. I think the reason I initially looked at it is because it is in very bad condition, and that does kind of warrant some, when you're walking through these fairly, fairly quickly and you're doing 10 or 20 houses a day, on your quick sketch, you're going to give it some negative points. Later, when you get back, you look at the photographs, you look at the point scoring system. Dan Peterson's point scoring system is very specific and very detailed. I don't think I've seen any, anything more detailed than Dan Peterson's system, and we followed it to the letter, and I can review it with you very carefully. The other thing that needs to be made here very clearly is that alterations to a home are not desecrations. Every home has changes to it over the course of time, and I think I explained that, um, this, in my, my memo, the 1214 Onyx property had two definite changes in its history. Sometime before 19, in the forties or before, it was changed to a duplex unit. So therefore you have those windows on the middle level that are probably not original, and we think probably more likely. At the same time, the entry to that second unit was, was added, and then the original entry was changed. That's not abnormal for an old home of this vintage to change use, but what happens are those changes become significant of themselves. They, they become part of the home, and they become historical features. So that, and the fact that in the, um, uh, that, and then the, um, the close, closing end of the porches is a very common feature as well. Whether these homes, all of them or any of them, had porches across the whole front or partial porches, we'll never know, but the, the wide open opening on that top level is still very apparent. You've got square columns and three or four divisions, and they're all still there. So when I say opening, I don't mean a window opening. If you look at 22, you've got four openings across the top. The one on the far left is an open opening, the middle two have windows in that opening, and then the fourth one has double-pane windows, I mean, double hung windows in it. So it's just the openings are all there, the original openings are all there. The roofs are there, the hip roof, the gable roof, and the side gable roof. The beams and the brackets and the eve, the wide overhanging eaves, the rafter tails are all there, and the triple wood siding on the upper floor and the ship, uh, the V-group channel siding on the lower floor is all there. These are original materials, probably from 1914 to 1916. This is an amazing situation, I believe, to have this kind of integrity for this vintage of a building. I think the, um, the major repairs that Onyx need, again, we had a long discussion at the Heritage Board meeting, needing maintenance is not the same as loss of integrity. The home hasn't really lost its historic features or desecrated them. It still exhibits its main features, which is its roofline, its massing, its eve detailing, its porch columns, its openings infilled with windows, porch weep holes, wood siding, and a clinker brick fireplace. These features need to be repaired, but they are extant. Um, and so, and I think people misconstrue when we say we can't change things, and I don't think that's what, what, what the board here does. I think the, the, what happens when, when I generate a, a report on a project is I will make recommendations to the board, then they go to the board, and the board often overrules my, 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 my recommendations. Like, again, the best scenario would be to keep the windows at 1214 Onyx the way they are, but the board often hears the homeowners and often decides to accommodate the homeowner. So I don't think anything here is inflexible. Yes, these are, I think, these three buildings together are eligible for the National Register, given the fact that at a local level, they are very important, they are very much related to a, to a local family. They are definitely by Gustav Nagel, and they are definitely architectural significant. You don't get anything more important than that. And so I think, um, what I'd like to say is that we do have here in Larkspur, um, one of the most comprehensive preservation programs I've ever experienced. We also have a fairly sophisticated board, and I think they accommodate homeowners mu, just about every level. So I think we've, we've, we've sussed these out, out, these, these, these things, we've discussed and we've reviewed them, and I think that the board unanimously concluded that these are significant for the city of Larkspur. So I would like to say that, um, based on these facts, and not misstatements, and nothing that is, nothing's, you know, arbitrary here, that I would professionally recommend that all three of these homes be on our list, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Are there questions of the city's consultant?
Yeah.
Councilmember Chu.
I guess this is, uh, you know, Christian can answer, you can answer. You know, when, when we've reviewed other properties before, you know, when, you know, much like Dennis's place on Hawthorne several years ago, the whole debate was over whether modifications had been made to the porch, and that seemed to be the primary focus of it, and now we're basically saying that, oh, well, it doesn't really matter as long as it retains some element of its original features. You know, and then the place across the street or down the street, I, I don't remember was Cedar, but it was on those really steep set of stairs coming up from Magnolia. There were some really restrictive things related to types of windows and, and all that, so I'm just trying to reconcile how the conversations from those hearings are either the same or different than what is being presented to us tonight.
Well, I was not here for the Hawthorne, I only reviewed the later addition to it, which I thought was very successful. But I, I, I think changes are acceptable as long as you are not obscuring, destroying, overwhelming the original features, and you can replace windows kind of in kind. I mean, you can take single glazed windows and replace them with double glazed windows. I always, always advocate for saving the old windows and the old wavy glass and the old wood, but.
Yeah, but there were, there were, you know, to use another example, I recall that there were features that couldn't even be replaced because the building codes had changed. And as a result of that, it, it, it was starting to compromise its, its, um, standing as a heritage property, and, you know, that's when we got into, it's kind of a, not a side discussion, but a policy discussion about, well, there's heritage, but if there's certain things where we want to maintain its heritage look, but it doesn't qualify anymore, then it's kind of like, I don't know, call it heritage light or heritage features, but, you know, and that's what I'm kind of struggling with here based on, you know, your.
Yeah, consistency.
Your, um, what you're telling us versus some of the old cases we've heard.
And I can't speak to the older cases, um, but I mean, I think all of you can see on these homes that they all of them have some kind of an openings across, you know, solid windows or porch openings across the entire upper floor.
But they have a porch that's been entirely enclosed.
And that's okay too, and that's, and that's a common use. That tells you the story of how these old buildings are, these old buildings get used in Larkspur, over time they change use. They, they might, they were rentals and then people moved in, and all of a sudden they don't want a cold drafty porch, or they need more living room. Enclosing porches is probably the most common architectural thing that happens to older homes. They can easily be reopened, they can be glazed in, as long as those columns are kept, the important character-defining features, and the windows kind of keep a multi-painted character. And I think on 1214, I can't remember if it's 1214 or 16, 1214 actually has two or three different types of multi-painted windows. I'm not, I don't remember, but I think it, it has a multitude of them. But I will say that, uh, the facade is the main feature that we like to hold, to preserve.
Yeah, I'll give you another example, because where I used to work up until a couple years ago, we had done a total renovation of the space. It was one bush where it was one of the first buildings that had the, the modern glass look, and this was in the mid-fifties. But when we moved into that floor, they told us that we could not change the ceiling tiles from anything that was visible from the street.
Well, some people, some cities, San Francisco's a very strong preservation city, and sometimes they go on, they, they qualify the interior as well. So I don't know the, the building, but here we don't do that.
Right, but I'm, that's where I'm trying to figure out the consistency of our previous projects.
Well, within the city of Larkspur, I've only been here for five years, okay, I think that's about, and we've never had an appeal to the council. We've had an appeal to the zoning commission once, and it was the Hawthorne, uh, you know, project, but other than that, most of the time, as I said, the board is really adept at working with homeowners to solve or resolve issues, and I don't think that.
I'll just make it clear, it's our, it's our job, it's our authority in sheer consistent reviews.
Yeah.
So I appreciate what you're saying. Vice Mayor Morrison has a question.
So Jerry, I, um, listened to the video, and what, what threw me off was, um, your changing of points.
Yeah, okay, so there was discussion, two issues. One was the discussion of the quality. I had given this home zero points for quality, and I think it was because it was so, it was kind of, it was falling apart, and there was a broken window.
It is falling apart.
Yeah, yeah. And so the, um, board looked at my points for the other two properties and said, well, this one has the same qualities, it still has the dormer, I mean, 1214 still has the dormer, still has the, the open, the window openings, the early second unit openings, and the same carriage door. It doesn't lose any quality, it's just in bad shape. And, um, Dan Peterson, in his evaluation, he looked at it when it was even in worse shape. The picture that I saw on his evaluation, it was in worse shape than it is now, and he still didn't give it any negative points. So I think we are being consistent, uh, from, I mean, if you look at Dan Peterson's evaluation points and my points, we're fairly consistent, except for those two areas. Five points here or five points there. Even if you took off five points or 10 points, this house would still qualify on its own without relationship to the other ones as a craftsman piece of architecture. The other thing I wanted to point out is, uh, Mr. Heard's, um, incorrect analysis of the desecration point systems. If you read Dan Peterson's point system, he only applies desecrations once, he doesn't apply it three times. He takes the worst one if it's a high point, high score building, and he takes the worst amount of desecration points, or if it's a low-scoring building, he takes the least amount. So you only do it once, you don't do it three times.
But Jerry, you just surprised me, because you, when you first started, you said, I, I did my homework, I did it so well, I knew exactly what I scored.
Well, I did, I was, okay, so I changed it on, I changed it on, number one, the desec, the quality of the architecture, okay? That it wasn't as bad as I thought it was. It still had all the elements, okay? And then the other thing I changed it on was the builder, okay? Dick Peterson was saying that we're not conclusive. Well, here, during the discussion, it came up that Dan Peterson, I'm not, sorry, Dan Peterson, Richard Cunningham, he did about the most exhaustive research I've ever seen on any building in Larkspur. He did a very good chain of title command, he knows who did what when. And so during that process, Dick Cunningham, and, and in his report, he concludes that he can't establish definitively that this was Nagel, okay? So during that hearing, um, everybody talked about this, is that in the, in, in the context of preservation research, Dick Cunningham was looking for the highest point, kind of evidence to ascertain that Nagel was the architect, and that was a set of plans with his, for the building with the name Nagel on it, okay? No one's found that. What we did determine, and this is where I think there, I decided that it is legitimate in this case, is that there was an oral history that established this authorship of this building, and that was his daughter telling whoever wrote LPP that he was the author of these buildings, and these buildings appear in the last two additions as being attributed to Nagel. So oral history is an acceptable form of research in preservation and attributing things, okay? And so we decided, the board just thought it would be acceptable, and I agreed that it should be applied here. The oral history of Nagel's daughter is enough to, to attribute the buildings to Nagel, number one, the oral history. Number two, the quality of these craftsmen buildings were not built by just any builder. There was somebody here who consciously knew how to build a craftsmen building, how to nuance it, put it together three different ways, and make it look like, you know, an individual home. So somebody with a lot of skill in the craftsmen architecture knew, you know, built these buildings. So even before, I hadn't, I didn't know these buildings were a Nagel from a Smith, and I walked up this, this, this road as a person who does for a living, looks at old homes and said, wow, this is a really great grouping of craftsmen architects. And then, you know, then you go back, you do your little, you know, photographs, and then you go back to the, the, the office and you do the research, and then I've got Dick's report saying that it's likely because of Nagel's association with the family. Nagel built their home, the original Doliver home that's on the National Register. It wouldn't be a leap for them to hire Nagel again to build their rental properties. The other piece of disinformation that's floating around here is that the Dolivers and the Jewels had to live in these homes, they did not. These are rentals, they were built for speculation. These are about the third or fourth set of homes in this time period, 1910 to 1920, that were built for rentals. There was people coming over from the city, and this was a great vacation place. So this is a common pattern of architecture in Larkspur in the tens and the twenties, and that, again, is another reason for its architectural significance. So there's a lot of associative evidence that ties us to Nagel, and we don't need a set of plans with his name on it.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Way has a question.
Part of the struggle with me in, is this process, is that there's a lot of subjectivity to it. There is, um, uh, in fact, in your research, in the comments you just made, you had some, you had some suppositions there that I'm not really sure, they were a stretch from sort of the surrounding area to, to accredit these properties with names of individuals. So we're.
Which, which individual, which?
The Doliver family, right. You assumed that they built this for a rental, but we have no evidence of that either. So I'm just saying there's a lot of give and take in this process.
Yes.
Because you go from, we go from a five to a 20 historically, with a tiny little change in the ownership or knowledge of.
Right, and if you look at Dan Peterson's point scoring system.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Okay, thank, thank you. So let's go to historic consideration, so.
He has a five.
Right, he has got, um, no, we're talking about, um, his historic consideration. The building is associated with a major recurring event in the history of the community, that is building rentals. Whether this, and you're saying it's not, but it, it, it was cited in the newspaper as a possibility here. Um, and we know that the homes were built in 1914 to 1916, and that they were by the Doliver Jewels. They were sold in 1924, 1926, so they were probably rentals from 1914, 16 to 26.
But they were probably, so, I mean, there is a lot, I mean, you threw a probably in there because we really don't know affirmatively.
Well, and we never will, and this is historic research without a lot of documentation. Evidence is, is always very sparse.
Right.
We do try to be conservative here.
So one of my, to piggyback on Vice Mayor Morrison, one of, I listened to the two-hour H.
Can you hold a second?
And.
How, how is relying on sparse evidence being conservative?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying that's usually all we have. I mean, that's usually all we have to rely on. I mean, oftentimes we don't have any except for our own, you know, experience, and that's why, just based on the architecture, just the architecture, not knowing that they're Nagels, not knowing that they're Dolivers.
But you see, the balance is we have to weigh the significant, um, possible intrusion of property right, properties of somebody.
I want to clarify this, this is very important. You're using the word conservative by meaning, by, by that you're saying, there's an assumption in there that allows you to take it, you're rounding. So are you rounding up or are you rounding down?
I've been rounding down, according.
You're using the word conservative.
I'm rounding down per my interpretation of Dan Peters' point system. I'm rounding down, per my interpretation of Dan Peters' point system.
Rounding down?
I mean, without even looking at his point system, I had given these homes about a 70 each. So I came down to 55, the board took it back up to 65.
So with the evidence, you made, using the word conservative by saying you're giving it the highest value?
No.
Under those conditions?
I'm giving it the lowest value. Conservative is lowest value. So let's, if we look at Dan, if we look at Dan Peterson's point scoring system for the historic consideration category, he gives us a choice of 60 points, 20 points, 10 points, five points, or zero points. For the relation to the Doliver Jewell family, I gave it a 20. And that is because the Doliver Jewels were of primary importance, loosely connected to the property. If you don't think the Doliver Jewels are primarily important, then they become secondary appointment of importance, family, intimately connected. They owned the property, they divided it up, they built the homes, they sold the homes. So I'm at 20.
When you're using the word conservative, you're assuming all of that's true.
I am.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions, Councilmember Way?
Well, I'll, I think Kevin has some. I can save mine for the conversation about...
Councilmember Harrow.
I just have a couple of quick questions. So I'm kind of looking at the Peterson report next to your report. And reflecting on, at least my impression from what we've heard tonight, is that the only piece of material information that you may have had, that Peterson may not have had, connected to the family history, which relates to the historical significance category.
That, and my interpretation of the importance of the craftsman architecture.
That's your, no, 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 that's your interpretation. So I'm trying to get away, I'm trying to figure out, he exercised his professional judgment presumably in making his evaluation, and he came up with a score of 30.
Yes.
He may not have had the information that you had, because it wasn't available regarding the family history. That's the only piece of information that he may not have had to take into consideration when he did his report back in 2006.
Correct.
So, other than with respect to that issue, we're really just talking about differences in the exercise of professional judgment here. And you're asking us to have us prefer yours, you know, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. But that's, that's a matter of professional judgment, and I'm not capable of evaluating whose professional judgment was better or not. So I'm looking at, what's the, let me finish. So I'm looking at, what's the new information that was available that could have justified a different scoring? And again, it's only that family history, which relates only to historical significance. In his scoring, he gave the historical significance category a five. You gave it a 20. So if you gave it, if you took your evaluation of its historical significance, sorry if I'm not speaking to the microphone, and you added it to the Peterson report, you would add 15 points to the total score. That would bring you up to 45, which still would not be enough to justify having this property classified as historically significant. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct, if you did it purely numerically like that. The other difference...
No, 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 and that's, that's my question. I'm doing it purely numerically, because that's what we have before us. We have two numeric assessments, one was his, based on his professional judgment, one is yours, based on your professional judgment. The only difference is that one piece of information that you had that he didn't have, and that will not get you to a score of 50.
Okay, let me say that, that is not the only difference. His was probably a very quick walk-by, and he didn't have to...
But you're assuming that.
Okay, no, no, wait a minute. Can I have my time to speak here? I can't evaluate whether he was doing it...
I'm just saying, he was doing all...
Can you, may I finish, please? I can't sit here today in the exercise of hindsight and evaluate whether or not he did a good job or didn't do a good job, whether you did a good job or whether he didn't do a good job. I'm trying to be as objective as possible here, in making a comparison between the two outcomes that we have in front of us, which lead to a different decision about how these properties should be classified, or how this property should be classified. The only material difference, in terms of the information that was available to you in the exercise of your professional judgment, and the information that was available to him in the exercise of his professional judgment, was that one piece of family history. If you take your score on that category, and you add it to his report, you still can't get to 50. So you're asking us to basically make a determination that you have better professional judgment than he did?
I had asked, I had access to more information.
You can do that, and that's fair enough, but from my sitting up here, in trying to make as an objective determination as I possibly can, giving you the benefit of the doubt on the additional, and the materiality of the additional information that was available to you, I still can't get to 50. Am I missing something?
I think I've done more research than he has, and I think we've had more hearings.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your comments and your patience. All right. Any other speakers? Once, twice? New, new information? Is it new information relevant to the property?
No.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Kevin, would you like to start? You seem, you seem to have some momentum there.
Well, I think I actually, I can repeat what I just articulated, but I guess again, in looking at all of this, we have two reports by two competent professionals who exercise professional judgment in evaluating these properties. There's only one real difference between those that I can identify as a layperson, and that's that one bit of additional information about the family history associated with this property. With even, given the highest rating that we might give, and certainly, given the rating that was given in this most recent assessment, that will get you up to 45 points. That won't get you up to 50. So it's not going to make a material difference in terms of the assessment of this property for historical significance. And as a result, I cannot support a designation of this property as historically significant. And can I just finish one other thing?
Could you speak to the process and next steps?
I wanted to say something about the process as well, because my comments just a moment ago actually do kind of relate to the process. There was a process that was entered into in 2006 that generated an outcome. People have some reasonable right to expect some certainty in terms of what they have to deal with in dealing with the city in developing their property.
Please, please.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't warrant applause.
Appreciate what you're saying.
But they do. They have a reasonable expectation that they can rely on, based upon a process that has gone forward, that the city had go forward on behalf of the community. I think there's a fundamental unfairness with a process that now leads, at this point in time, to a different outcome, particularly one I can't see that is justified based upon the record before us.
Councilmember Way?
I think you succinctly outlined what I have heard also on this process. I think we have a very subjective process that may not, in this particular evening, require some further assessment by the council about where we stand in this process, and I'll leave that for another day. I concur with Kevin on what the analysis and what the burden would be on this analysis, but I'm particularly worried that we're looking at a pattern, a cluster of three homes, yet we have no one from 16 Onyx here, nor we have no questions or discussion of 16 Onyx here, or 22, the lovely woman was here, but we've had no further analysis of those in this conversation. But we would be attributing all three of these homes to the registry without that further process, which I don't think really is the way we should be looking at this. We need to take each of these properties in their merit alone and individually, but not in a combination. So I was disturbed, I was concerned initially with the way we are looking at all three of these together. So I, I really think that Kevin's analysis is probably the most affirming one for me.
Vice Mayor Morrison?
And the timeline was quite disturbing. Excuse me. The timeline was quite disturbing, you know, the historical inventory started in 1979, and they bought the house in 2006, 2008, it was not part of the inventory, and then they go do the remodel, then, oh, hold on, we have a concern here. So that, that just doesn't sit well with any of us, that's what I'm hearing. Also, there is actually three evaluations we have. We also have one from Mark Hilbert, and Mark gave it a 25. And Dan Peterson gave it a 30. So two out of three, I feel that those three do not need to go on to the inventory.
Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, this, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an architect, and these things always are difficult for me. But one of the things I'd like to ask Sky, who is an attorney, is in the absence of a statute of limitation, is there a de facto one in California for civil matters?
That's too broad a question for me to answer.
Oh, okay. For, for homes.
But for what cause of action, that's the problem.
Well, like what we're doing now.
Well, I mean, it depends on what you think we're doing now. That's, I mean, that's why I say it's too broad a question for me to answer, as you posed it.
Well, what we have is something where a determination was made back in 2006, and 12 years later, we're being asked to basically change it.
Well, if I could characterize those two actions somewhat differently, in 2006, there was an evaluation performed, and there was, but there was no decision. There was simply not an inclusion in a list of properties that were proposed to be listed. The program itself, if you look at the documents about the historic resources inventory specifically says that properties will be reevaluated over time. So I don't think that what you're being asked to do tonight is inconsistent with the existing program, or with the non-inclusion of these three properties in the 2006 listing of properties that the council added to the, to the inventory.
Okay, so basically, it's like changing a tire on a moving car.
I mean, I would not characterize it that way. I would say that it is consistent with the existing historic resources program that the council has endorsed in the past, that says that, that properties can be evaluated in groups, and that, that if they're not included at that time, when there's more resources available to do a more thorough evaluation, that they can be reevaluated in the future, as more historical evidence becomes available.
Okay, well, what we've been presented, and I'll just succinctly reiterate it, because I agree with a couple of my council colleagues' comments, is that we have the technical evaluation done in 2006. And when you look at those elements, the things that they've evaluated on can only get worse, because you're talking about things like desecration, or, what was the other one, disrepair, something like that.
Well, but the historical record can improve over time, to counterbalance any of those changes.
Yeah, so the only thing that's changed on the historical record, as pointed out by Councilmember Harrow, is the knowledge or some preponderance of evidence that we know who the owners were.
Well, I would also say, though, I mean, I don't think that's the only change in historical information. I actually don't think that's accurate. I think Ms. Alon was attempting to say that there is more historical information that solidifies connections. But setting that aside, I think it's also important to...
But those are subjective, as it was pointed out, so...
They're, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not qualified to have a debate with you about, about how historical architectural assessments should be done. All I'll say is that there's a historical record, people do the research the best that they can. Inferences have to be drawn in the absence of concrete evidence, and part of the, part of what historians do is attempt to bridge those gaps. But I would also say, to your point about some, that in essence, physical elements of a building can only get worse over time. I think that you, that, I also am not an expert in these things, but I at least understand that, and, but this point, I think, has gotten obscured in multiple discussions about potentially listing historical, or listing potentially historical buildings, is that, that things like the quality of the architecture, unless, do not necessarily decline over time unless there's an active attempt to destroy them. Buildings may, like structural elements may deteriorate and need greater repair, but that's not the same as a degradation in the quality of the architecture. So some things may actually not get worse over time, they may stay exactly the same without active intervention.
Yeah, but it won't get better.
No, but they won't, but if it's an architectural element that hasn't been actively interfered with, it'll be exactly the same.
Yeah, and what we've seen here is a degradation of things, features like the dormers and the foundation, which still got zero points, which meant that there's no recognition for that state of disrepair or the need for repair.
At this point, I think you, I'm not the one to have that conversation.
Yeah, okay. Where I'm going with this, because you allowed me to back into it, was the question that the mayor has asked, and that's about process. And I think one of the things, when you allow this much time to pass, and to have different people evaluating it, is, is that there's, there's a lack of consistency. And there's also a second thing that lacks consistency, which is that I didn't get any affirmation to say that the way we evaluated the properties in the past is the same or different than it is now, so I can only go by my own recall. And the criteria that we placed on other properties is not the same criteria we're placing on this, these.
I believe that, that, I mean, I, somebody else should confirm this, I believe the evaluation criteria are the same.
They are.
Yeah. And again, to the, and I just want, the only point that I want to make from a legal perspective on this is, again, ultimately, it's the council's, it's the city's program that we're talking about. If the council wants to change it, you can, but the program as it exists specifically contemplates that properties may be reassessed over time. So to the extent that there is concern about that aspect of the process, it's one for the council to consider in the future. What's been done for these houses is not inconsistent with the program as it has existed since 1979.
No, not what's done with the house, but how we look at the features and determine if it's, are they historically significant or not.
That evaluation sheet, the Peterson program is the same. It has not changed.
But our discussion this time, in my recollection, is clearly different.
Well, but that's, that's not the same, is, the criteria are the same, and the program is not, has not changed, and what's, and the reevaluation of these three properties is consistent with the program as it has existed since 1979.
Okay. Well, we, I think, as I mentioned to the city manager earlier yesterday, that I think we do need to revisit our historic preservation policies, but at this point, I would have to agree with my other council colleagues that, you know, I don't think the score really warrants putting them on the historic registry, at least 1214. We didn't get a chance to really look at 1622.
The city manager has something to add?
It's sort of building a little bit upon some of Mr. Wooder's comments, and also just to remind the council generally of how I approach agenda management. I specifically instructed the staff to keep this item, from their perspective, germane to the question before the council. And I appreciated Mr. Hurd actually separating out the germane question from the secondary issue of process. I did not instruct the staff, nor did I signal to anyone involved in the heritage preservation board that the process specifically would be on trial. So you have to keep in mind that all comments about the process that you heard tonight, and were placed on the record in the public hearing, are from people who object to the process. I'm not saying there might not be problems with the process, but you didn't have anybody here to give you a true and fair perspective of the process. And so I think I would encourage you to keep your comments about the process to be, as Councilmember Chu has just done, I'd like to have a future revisit of that issue. And I want to remind the council that germane question is whether you want to put these three properties on... three properties on the inventory. And, and I think you want to keep those a little bit separate, because had you wanted to put the process on trial to make this decision, we should postpone a decision, and we should signal to the broader community that we have a very different issue in front of the council.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, thank you for your question. I am. Councilmember Harof is ready for action?
And action. So just a point of clarification. So the staff reports recommendation is that we approve the recommendation of the Heritage Commission, and we adopt whatever the resolution number, I don't have it in front of me now. I don't, my, my sense from the comments of the council is that we're not in a position to approve that resolution and adopt the recommendation. So what would the action we would be taking in order to accomplish that, if any?
Um, I, so it's a little, I'm just, I'm hesitating only because it's a little awkward to articulate, not that I haven't thought about it. But in essence, this is a recommendation to you. You are, if the council is inclined not to adopt that recommendation, then no action is required.
That's why...
On the other hand, it, it may be if you, I think, and I'm not, I mean, it might need just a minute to confer with, with the planning staff about whether or not they'd like something in the record that actually reflects, you know, a basis for not accepting the recommendation. But ultimately, the board made a recommendation, you don't have to accept it, and if you just wanted to make a motion that, you know, we, we don't want to accept the recommendation at this time, that, that would procedurally be sufficient.
That, that's why I asked the question. I, I just want to make sure we've got a clear record.
Would councilmen, would councilmembers like to align themselves with Councilmember Harof's remarks earlier as a, as a way of putting their position on the record?
I'd like to hear it, Dave.
Yeah.
I'm looking for that resolution. It's right here. I have it. Thanks, Kevin.
So I think one of the things is, do you just not, does the council just not want to accept the recommendation, or do you actually want to find that the scoring for all, any one or all three of these buildings should be different?
My, my sense is that we just don't want to accept the recommendation. So...
If I'm hearing the staff correctly, if you also want to facilitate the work that the property owner wants to do going forward, procedurally, it'd be much better if you actually make a decision that some other score is more accurate. For example, you might decide Mr. Peterson's score is sufficient, and staff can help you make whatever findings you need to do to do that. Councilmember Harof, you offered your assessment of what you think the score is and why.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing from the staff, that would actually be a better outcome if you're also attempting to facilitate the work that the property wants to do without having to get bogged down into some messy sequel questions.
Sure, I understand. That's, that's a fair point. The struggle I have right now is that the, the conversation we've had tonight has only focused on the one property, so...
Right, that is the point I was going to make, is there really hasn't been, so if you wanted to take action along the lines that the city manager just suggested, I would suggest directing staff to come back with a resolution that could be on the consent calendar to, for you to adopt, that would set a, that would conclude that a different score was appropriate for all three of the buildings, if that's the desire of the council.
And, and I, again, from what I've heard, is that the, the information that was material to me tonight was the information about the family history of the property. That information, I think, probably cuts across all three of these properties. So if we were to adopt, or if we could, if we could see what, what the outcome would be of changing the historical significance ranking, consistent with the new information from the new assessment, keep the old Peterson assessment and see what those numbers would be, we, we were able to do it off the top of our head tonight with respect to the 1214 property. Maybe we can even do it with the other ones.
So...
16 was a 30 originally.
The item that you, the scoring that you had issue with...
That lowered the 16, or 1214 to 45 points would apply across the board to the other two.
That's my assumption.
That would then lower 16 also to 45 points. But it would lower 22 to 50 points, which just qualifies it. So you'd need to take just a look at 22 and see if you disagree with other criteria that have been itemized.
I, I actually, you know, I, I think...
Oh, Dan Peterson's evaluation did originally give 22, 45 points. So...
So I suggest we keep that one, and we'll change the other two. And then we'll all end up with 45 points.
But that's not keeping consistent, though.
I see, I think it is. Given my understanding of the entire thing.
I think if you're going to, I just suggested if you're going to rely on Mr. Peterson's evaluation for one of them, you should just decide to rely on the...
Well, then let me, let me, let me make a modification. I, I actually can't sit here and evaluate how many additional points should be given for historical significance based upon the information, the new information. So my recommendation would be simply to retain the present scoring on all three of these properties.
Okay. I would suggest that we come back with a resolution on...
Yes, memorializing that.
To memorializing that. And so, and I would suggest you make a motion to that effect with, with, to make that finding and direct, direct staff to come back with a resolution to that effect.
So I, I will move that the, the council maintain the rankings that were given to each of these properties under the original Peterson assessments, and request the preparation of a resolution memorializing that for consideration at the next city council meeting. Does that sound fair enough?
That's, I think that works.
So that's my motion.
There's been a motion?
Do you want to second it?
Is there a second?
I'll be happy to second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. It's been very difficult. Mr. Mayor. Hang on, hang on. City, Mr. City Manager, do you have something?
Before you close the item, I just want to put in the record, I'll confer with staff, and we'll report to you at your next meeting, what's a reasonable schedule to set up a broader discussion. I sense that's a desire of the council.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody involved. This is a difficult situation. I think the best outcome was to move forward as we have tonight. Thank you.
Eight point one.
We've been here exactly four hours.
I know. No, no, we got one more issue, right? Don't we have that, what came through with the MCCNC legislation?
Oh, yeah, well, that's a, that's a, that's a new one.
Did that come through, guys? That's very simple. It's a letter?
That was edited.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
Four hours on the mark.